Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, Mayor Patino will participate in a meeting via teleconference from 58 Hacienda Drive, Napa, California. All votes will be taken by roll call vote. Madam Mayor, please confirm that a copy of this agenda has been posted at the teleconference location. The teleconference location is accessible to the public and the public will be given an opportunity to address the council from that location. I would like to call this meeting to order for City Council meeting of June 7, 2016. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Waterfield?
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
Thank you. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to announce that anyone wishing to make comments on Agenda Item Number Four, the fireworks update, should complete a speaker slip at this time to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. The first item on our agenda this evening will be a presentation of the Hometown Heroes honorees, and as Mayor Pro Tem, I will make the presentation along with Recreation and Parks Director, Mr. Posada, and at this time, I'd like Mr. Posada to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Waterfield and members of the City Council. Good evening. Good evening to the viewing public that's here. We want to take this opportunity to introduce to you the Hometown Heroes Program. The Hometown Heroes Program was developed to recognize residents of the city of Santa Maria who currently serve or have served in the United States military. This program will include the display of banners along College Drive in the Bradley Square area. The city of Santa Maria Hometown Heroes Military Banner Program was created in collaboration with the Santa Maria American Legion Post and the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post. We've been working with this closely. Dennis Smitherman on my staff has been working on this program for probably close to a year now. What we have done is gone out to the community and asked for individual groups, service clubs, to sponsor individuals for these banners. What I would like to do this evening is introduce to you our representatives from the American Legion. Today, I have Mr. Joe Skoda, he's the Commander of American Legion Post 56, and Carl Homquist, the Commander of Veterans of Foreign War Post 2521. Mayor Pro Tem, if you could join us down here?
Absolutely.
On the screen will be displaying the banners that will be going up for each of the honorees in what we're calling the Summer Class of 2016. Each of these banners have been sponsored for $250 by either families, individuals, or a service club. First, I'd like to invite Mr. James H. Bray, a veteran of the U.S. Army, to come up and receive his certificate. Would you like to accept that for Jake? Thank you.
It's Mom.
Yes. Thank you.
Carol, I think your picture should be on there.
Thank you. We'll present that to the Johnson family. Next is Carino J. Galvez. There we are. I was going to say Mrs. Clark will be happy to accept that on behalf of her brother. Sadly, Mr. Galvez passed away recently, wasn't able to make it to the date of this presentation. We're sad that that didn't happen. Jonathan Staffel. Thompson Knott. Right there. In closing, we would like to thank the members of our Hometown Heroes Committee, the American Legion Post, and the Veterans of Foreign War Post for helping us with this. The next class will be the Winter Class of 2016. These banners will be posted, again as I mentioned, on College in the Bradley Square area. They'll be up for six months, and at the end of that six months, they'll be taken down. The banners will be given to the families, and the new class will go up. So if any of you are interested, you can contact either the American Legion Post here in town, or the Veterans of Foreign War Post, or the Recreation and Parks Department, and we'd be happy to get you connected so that we can do a sponsorship. And by the way, the sponsorships for a banner are $250, which cover the time and materials for the banner. Thank you very much, members of the City Council. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Posada, and I would like to congratulate each and every veteran for their service to our country. Thank you very much. I will wait until the room clears before I go any further. The next item on our agenda this evening is the Public Comment Period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on this agenda. Unless otherwise directed by Mayor Pro Tem Waterfield, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form, and we have four requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. And I want to remind everybody again that once again, if you'd like to make comments on Agenda Item Number Four, or yeah, Agenda Item Number Four, the fireworks update, right now would be a good time to submit your slip. Okay, we have four items. Hans Does, 2976 Industrial Parkway.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Hans Deuce. I am a resident of Solvang, but I am currently almost done relocating my business, Hans Deuce Blacksmith, up here to Santa Maria. So I'm giving 2976 as my address. I just want to come up and introduce myself and let you all know that it's been a pleasure working with your city staff from City Manager to Planning Director to Building Department in coming up here. I have a little bit of experience with this since I'm also on the Solvang City Council. I see a few familiar faces from either Board of Supervisors meetings or League of City functions. So anyway, you'll probably see me around, but I just do want to say that I really appreciate the environment here in Santa Maria. I think back on a study, and I'm sure you folks are aware of it, it was from 2010, I believe. It was, I don't know if it was one of the UCSB forums, but it was addressing industries, starting with professionals, manufacturing, construction, all the way down through hospitality, retail, service industries. And the interesting thing I found was just below the professional fields where, as far as wages, was the manufacturing. And this is, of course, a field that I'm in. Going on down towards the bottom, we found the hospitality, we found the retail, we found the services industries. So it's very, very encouraging to be welcomed this way as a manufacturer, even though we get a little noisy and dirty at times from the city. So anyway, thank you, and I probably won't be a stranger around here.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Deuce. Our next speaker, our next speaker is William and Louise Butler.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm William Butler, and my wife, Dr. Louise Butler, are here to comment on the Fourth of July fireworks at PVHS. With the current information given in the media and online from city records, my wife and I do not support the movement of the Fourth of July fireworks to the northeast part of the city. It is incongruous to us that on one hand, the city supports Safe and Sane Fireworks Program, including spending of city funds making that available for "be neighborly" yard signs, while on the other hand, supporting the move of a large city fireworks display at PVHS. I wonder, did the city decide to move the fireworks display because of complaints it received from the residents surrounding the Santa Barbara County Fair Park in the past years? Many folks do not listen to the media, nor do they inform themselves on city issues like this when it arises. We are concerned that once the large fireworks display begins at PVHS, others nearby will unleash their illegal fireworks, and it will be impossible for surrounding residents to identify which are illegal and which our city approved in order to support the city's new administrative sanctions for these unauthorized fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Our next speaker is Tammy Turner.
Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you for having me up here and listening to me. I grew up here in Santa Maria, and I grew up in East Gate, which is near Pioneer Valley High School. We lived there because it was considered on the outskirts of town, and it was quiet and peaceful and a great place to grow up. There wasn't a whole lot of traffic, and there isn't a lot of crime right now. I came back to Santa Maria and purchased my mom's home after she passed away, knowing that that area is quiet and still kind of considered on the outskirts of town. I am opposed definitely to the Pioneer Valley High School having the fireworks, especially because I have this service dog that is in training, and it would be very difficult to teach her to not be afraid of those sounds. I wonder why we're bringing it over to this area when, especially on Main Street, the traffic can get really bad, especially after Marion Hospital and Pioneer High School let out. There's just not room for the traffic, and I am afraid of the future crime that could come into our area. It's a very peaceful area right now, except for the illegal fireworks that are on Bryan Street. So I oppose. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Our next and final speaker is Debbie Warren.
I'm also here, obviously, about the fireworks once again. I feel the same way as the other speakers. I'm not quite sure why you would choose to move the fireworks after all these years. We've been here since 1988. Everybody is quite used to where the fireworks have been. They know to prepare. They live there. Were the residents in that area polled or given any notice or anything to the move? That's one. Number two, you guys have been doing, we've had a really good time right now with not having as many fireworks, so kudos for the hard work that you've put forth, but we're still having them. We also are curious to why something was brought to my attention, and I checked it out. Why are the local stores allowed to sell fireworks? They've been selling them for over a month. I go and I talk to one of the assistant managers of the store, and he tells me, "Well, they're only poppers." Well, I think the name says it all right there. They make noise. If we're going to try and get a real handle on the situation here, would it not be advisable to limit the time that any of these stores are able to be able to sell fireworks, whether they're poppers or not? That's something that I would hope that the city and the county both will look into. It's only helping exacerbate the situation. You know, everybody's got fireworks on the brain now. So if maybe you guys could look into curtailing the stores from selling those? Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on any further, Mr. Hayden, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The issue that Mrs. Turner mentioned on the Ryan Street, was it Ryan Street or Bryan Street?
Bryan.
Bryan? Okay. We will canvas that street. We do have a fireworks task force that our deputy city manager, Stillwell, will be talking about in a minute, and we have looked back at some of the, what I would refer to as hotspots in the city of Santa Maria as far as illegal fireworks are concerned, and we will be canvassing them prior to the Fourth of July, putting flyers out there indicating to them what our new procedure is. And then, as far as Ms. Warren is concerned, as far as the stores that are selling illegal fireworks, if, I'll ask my deputy city manager afterwards to talk to her and find out what the name of those stores are, and then we can follow up on that from a compliance issue. But our next agenda item is dealing with fireworks, and I believe either our Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Posada, or Mr. Stillwell will be able to address the Butler's concerns as well, too.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Moving along on a consent calendar, Madam Clerk, would you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members. And I should mention that Item 3G, the Jim May Park Biofilter Award of Bid, is being pulled and continued to a future meeting.
Before we move on, do we, does anyone have any items that they wish to pull for discussion? Great.
With that, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I would move for the approval of the consent calendar with the exception of Item 3G.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Fantastic.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
The next order of business is a presentation, and I believe Deputy City Manager Stillwell will be giving that report. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The City Council will receive an update on the city of Santa Maria's enhanced efforts addressing illegal use of fireworks and Fourth of July fireworks events.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'll just kick it off, and Recreation and Parks Director Alex Posada could, will take the first part. So we're here to discuss an update on the fireworks enforcement, education, and community Fourth of July celebration, and, oh, thank you. So we have Fourth of July activities coming forward, and we're preparing for those. The first part of this presentation will be about the community events on the Fourth of July. Mr. Posada will present that, and then I'll talk about the plans that we have for Safe and Neighborly Fourth of July, both with the enhanced enforcement and with the public education.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Madam Mayor and Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the City Council, good evening again. One of the things, one of the speakers mentioned was, you know, the show's been out at the fair park a lot. It's happened. Over the years, the fair park has been really resistant to offering the show over the years. We've worked with them for probably the last four or five years. City Manager's Office and myself and my staff have worked, and it came to an end where the fair park just was not in a position to want to host the show in that area. So based on the meetings that were held with a number of the community groups earlier about the fireworks issue, you know, we looked for alternative locations, and we looked for an alternative partner, and that partner ended up being the Pioneer Valley High School. One of the things that we used as a model was the Lompoc City Firework Show, which is held at the Lompoc Football Stadium. So we were kind of looking for something similar there. We approached the high school. We talked to the MG, you know, it's a good opportunity for a community event. The actual community event will begin at 3:00 at the school. They have a format laid out of carnival games. We're going to open the swimming pool that day at the school. They have parking facilities for up to 700 cars, I believe. So it was a good location in the regard of the community events. The fireworks show, the other thing that we tried to look for is something that was not flying over private homes as it does when it was at the fair park, and that there'd be a nice fallout area, which is required anyway. So we looked at the property immediately east of the Pioneer High School as the location. That location has worked out to be a good location as far as the fireworks go. The actual show itself will start at 9:00 or approximately 9:00. It's about 20 minutes long, and we will be posting out in the area informational flyers to the neighborhoods. We are also looking at street closures that will be manned, street closures out in the area. Those residents in the Pioneer Village area and the Sierra Vista development, and I believe in the new development, there'll be some street closures there. So we don't want to encourage, you know, people from outside the area to come and park. If they do come, they should be parking at the school. The other option, or the other thing that I heard mentioned was traffic. Certainly, that's one of the things that we're working with the police department and also with the city rangers to help with any enforcement issues that we have out there. But we're hoping for a very nice, clean, family event, lots of entertainment, lots of fun, and again, about a 20-minute fireworks show. This slide kind of shows the kind of the layout that the high school is looking at doing. Most of the activity will be concentrated, excuse me, around the basketball tennis court area and their student parking lot. At about, I believe it's roughly 8:00, they'll be opening the stadium for individuals who are there to go, and they can have seats at the stadium to watch the show, which again will be directly to the east of that location, and down very, very close to the property line with the city landfill. So from residences, I believe the closest residence is like maybe 800 to 1,000 feet away. Feet, I'm not sure exactly, it may be right around there somewhere. That's it for my side. Thank you.
Mr. Stillwell, did you want to proceed?
Sure, thank you. And so as far as the focus that we have on a safe July 4th, we're building on the action the council took with adopting the ordinance changes at the end of last calendar year. Primarily, it's to only use fireworks for a 12-hour period on July 4th, and based on that council action, we developed an action plan that'll talk about the highlights of enhanced enforcement and public education. And really, my role here is it's a great, I'm excited to be able to present this because it's been an effort from staff throughout the organization that you'll see, I think, a lot of good work that the community, that the staff has done to benefit the community. So as far as the enhanced enforcement, we have a task force in place that will be conducting sting operations throughout the month preceding the Fourth of July. You know, one issue I want to mention, or let me just, so the task force is multi-departmental, primarily police, but also includes the fire inspectors, rangers, other staff. One challenge with the enhanced enforcement is we need to catch firework violators in the act. So a lot of times, people say there's an illegal firework going off, and by the time we show up, you know, the person's already extinguished the firework. So it's a challenge for us to be able to be there, see the actual illegal activity occurring, see who the perpetrator is, and being able to take action against that person who broke the law. So we need to have that real clear identification of the violator. Another side of, another tool we have for the enhanced enforcement is third-party citations. That's the action the council took last November, and it allows residents to be able to say, "Well, I saw the person over there." They have to have them and one other witness be able to corroborate, and we can issue a third-party citation for up to $1,000 for people who violate it, violate the firework ordinance and are seen by a third party. The use of illegal fireworks is an expensive proposition with the stings, with the citations, the $1,000 fines. Search warrants could be issued based on the activity that the sting, the task force identifies. So that's the real message there, is that the enhanced enforcement's out there, and use of illegal fireworks will be an expensive proposition. And then on the public education side, our message there is to celebrate the Fourth of July neighborly. Some messages are be kind to pets and avoid injuries. And the work we've done there has been focused on a lot of outreach, and we've conducted, we have, let's see, we have a press release that we've issued, and we posted in the City Hall to show people what the new rules are, what the enhanced enforcement is, and to be able to explain to people how the, how to have a safe Fourth of July and celebrate neighborly. We also have been paying for radio ads, or will be paying for radio ads, both in English and Spanish. We produce fireworks PSAs, four of them, in English and Spanish, so eight total, four in English, four in Spanish. That'll be cable casts on our PEG channel. We'll touch on that in just a moment. That'll be cable casts on our PEG channel, we'll touch on that just a moment here. They'll also be showing at the 24 movie theaters, the two Edward Cinemas downtown, and then out by the highway during the whole month of June, and also on the city's YouTube at Firework webpage. We also submitted utility billing inserts in English and Spanish that were delivered twice to all utility users in the city. We have bus placards, again, in English and Spanish, that will put up in the buses for the 90,000 monthly riders to be able to see as they use the bus during the month. We have hundreds of yard signs available, both in English and Spanish, they have a nice frame here, and people can come to city hall to pick those up. And so far, we've disseminated 65 of them, and so we have another couple hundred. So if people want a yard sign, they can choose between English, Spanish, or have both, and be able to pick them up here at city hall.
And what does the yard sign say?
Thank you. So it says, "Celebrate Fourth of July neighborly, noise-sensitive resident lives here, be courteous to your neighbors," in both English and in Spanish. And we also have several hundred flyers, the council has them on the dais, there's, there were some in the back, there's more available. I left some for you folks. And we'll have those available at the vendor booths to be handed out to customers purchasing fireworks at the Safe and Same booths, and at every counter at the city departments. And as I mentioned, we do have four public service announcements, there are 30-second videos focusing on, one is fireworks in noise-sensitive residents, the second is fireworks in common sense, third is fireworks are dangerous, and the fourth is fireworks in pets. And if you would entertain us, we wanted to show you the fireworks in pets 30-second public service announcement.
[inaudible]
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 Yeah, so those will be getting on our, on our PEG channel, but also at all the movie theaters here through the month of June. So I think they're well done, they have four different themes. We also do have County, Santa Barbara County Animal Control here tonight as well to discuss what the counties do and answer any questions about pets and fireworks. And then I think finally, let me see if I can, well, the last message is just that we want to celebrate with a community spirit and have a safe and happy Fourth of July, and, you know, with the city's been taking a lot of efforts to be able to get the word out and be prepared for Fourth of July, and build on the, the success we had for New Year's Eve, and actually Memorial Day, which we had fewer firework incidents than we had had in the past. And we're available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the council have any questions that they would like to ask staff?
I do, as a matter of fact. Thank you, Jason, that was very well put together. I guess I've got some basic questions that probably the public might have, because I know in the past, we've had some significant importation of fireworks, and I think a lot of you have probably come across people selling them, or in the business area, down alleys and things like that. And I would say as far as the sting operation, that, and I don't know, I'm just stating this, that if any of you or the viewing public see, hear, someone selling fireworks in your neighborhood, in your businesses, and those kinds of things, then you should pass that on. I would assume that that's part of the instance that we're looking for. A car description of the guy working out of his trunk, or a truck delivering down an alley to businesses, or families, or such and such, would certainly be a help with the description, and I think even at homes that you, I won't say suspect, you have kind of a thought that they're probably importing fireworks to use later on in the week, or the night, or something of that nature, you need to pass that on. And my understanding, too, is, and we heard talking about Bryan, where I used to live, and where I kind of live by now, and I've seen a couple of households where I know they traditionally do some big bang stuff, and I pass that on because the city will, in fact, send out a notice that, Bobby, someone has observed you shooting fireworks for a number of years, and you need to cease and desist because we got our eyes on you. And I assume that's appropriate verbiage, I asked Kendall there, our police officer charged it. I think this is what we're trying to say to the public.
Councilmembers Zuniga?
Thank you. So I just have two comments. What I want to say is, I live in a neighborhood that is traditionally, there's a lot of fireworks, illegal fireworks going off, and I have to say, this year, it hasn't started yet, and usually, we've heard just a couple, and usually by now, they're going full bore. And so I think that our efforts, at least in my neighborhood, are being felt, because then we don't, aren't experiencing that as much as we have in years past. And then, Mr. Posada, I have a question regarding food at the Pioneer Valley High School. Are there going to be food vendors out there? Three to nine is a long time, and I'm guessing we're hoping families bring picnics and stuff, but I'm wondering if we're going to have anything like food trucks, or maybe nonprofits out there selling food, or something?
Thank you, councilmembers Zuniga. The high school has made arrangements with some of their booster clubs within the school to be facilitating those kinds of groups, so there will be food available, there'll be games and activities, and other vendors and public information kinds of booths going on.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Boyson?
I do. First of all, I assume that it's illegal to be in possession of illegal fireworks?
Yes, they're illegal.
So...
Yes. No, I'm sorry. It's illegal to possess them as well as illegal to use them.
Illegal to possess them as well as illegal to sell. So another part of our enforcement of this, you know, the neighbor and a consulting member, if they were to contact our code enforcement and say, you know what, I saw the truck back up, and he's got his garage loaded with fireworks, is that enough information for us to send code compliance out there?
Yes.
Or have a search warrant?
Yep.
Be able to get that?
Exactly, that's a good point. Possession is a crime, and it would bring our task force members, the police, other officials of the city out there to enforce that, and you're correct, it could lead to a search warrant and a lot of other problems for the people with the illegal fireworks.
So, and I think that most of the folks that live in the neighborhoods that have been affected, and believe me, I was absolutely amazed, Mr. Butler can appreciate this, this was my, last year was my first year, I spent Fourth of July with my sister and brother-in-law who live in Morro Estates, and it just seemed like the Iraqi war all over again. I mean, it was just incredible, the amount of fireworks and that sort of thing. And I've got to believe those folks that live in those neighborhoods know who the perpetrators are. They, they're not going to bring these fireworks in at 7:00 on, on July 4th, they're going to have them stored and that sort of thing, and I think that would be another avenue for them. The other concern, though, that I do have is that, what type of permitting did we provide, or, or is there permitting required by Pioneer High School to have the fireworks?
Fireworks, aye.
Display, yeah.
Thank you, councilmember. The fireworks show, the actual fireworks, is a city show, the city is responsible for that. So we've worked through the fire department to get the permits necessary to have the show launched, and we have hired the, the contractor that will actually shoot the show, and that's been run through the People for Leisure and Youth, their organization handling that component of it and collecting the public donations. The high school, as a separate agency of the state, they can offer programs as they wish on their campus. So their component of it is simply the activities happening on the campus. They're not sponsoring the show, they're in no way involved in the show directly, the actual fireworks display.
And so, as far as community outreach, I mean, I know that we've done a lot of community outreach as far as the effects of illegal fireworks, and, and, you know, hopefully minimizing this. But as far as the specific location of Pioneer Valley, is this pretty much it for the public outreach? That, did we have any neighborhood meetings?
There was no specific neighborhood meetings, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Maybe, maybe this is time for another one of the northeastern neighborhood meetings to, to discuss this, and perhaps we can discuss the effects of this over, between now and the next Fourth of July.
Sure, that would be fine. And that's one of the things, too, that I didn't mention, is that we'll certainly see how this goes out there. If it doesn't go well, you know, it may not, may not be the location for that event. We'll see how this community supports. What I did want to mention, we are, the show is about a $30,000 show, where somewhere in the neighborhood, the last number I had was about $23,000 that was raised and from the community for that show. So there is the interest out there from the community and businesses to support such a display.
I think my concern, as well as the concern of some of the neighbors, is perhaps not so much our show as it, it may just be an attraction for other individuals to, let me see if I can do one better than the city of Santa Maria, and...
Yes, I understand, and I think that will be the focus of our enforcement side of things, is trying to really crack down on those illegals that are happening around the community.
And, and it may even be, be a good idea to have an increased enforcement in that Pioneer Valley, Morro Estates, east part of the, northeast part of the city.
Yes, and I believe the police department has budgeted several hundred hours in the weeks leading up to the event, and in the days prior to Fourth and on the Fourth itself, they have a special enforcement unit set up to handle that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyson. Madam Mayor, did you have any comments to make?
No, I have none.
Okay, thank you. I do have one comment to make, and that has to do with one of the issues, one of the speakers, and that brought up, and that is traffic. Seven hundred, there are 700 cars that can come to that one location, and I don't know who's going to address this for me, I don't know if it's going to be Kendall or someone else, but that's a lot of cars in that area, and living in that area, there is an increase of traffic during school and Marion Hospital, which doesn't affect this, you know, on that, on that particular evening, but I've seen the repercussions of those two issues there, 700 cars. How are we going to control the traffic? And I'm sure we're going to have a lot of officers out there.
Well, right now, the plan is to go ahead and, as I mentioned, close off the majority of the streets in the area, so you'll have to pass through the barricades. The main street in that area is all traffic controlled with lights, so we don't expect a lot of difficulty there. We don't expect to have 700 people arrive within an hour of one another. Because the event starts at 3:00, we expect people to trickle in throughout the day and leave throughout the day. Some people may choose not even to stay for the actual fireworks display. When approximately 6:00 PM in the evening, then the neighborhood barricades will actually be manned, and we'll have people there asking if they're residents, or if they're guests of residence, things like that. So we try to keep the traffic off of those streets. The other major arterials in the area, 700 cars, traffic is not a big deal to handle with the normal traffic, traffic design that we have in the, in the area. Those are big streets, Main Street and Panther are both large streets. So we don't expect too much problems there. We did, we did look at the Marion issue, and again, it's far enough away, emergency routes and things like that, we don't expect a lot of congestion. I think at the end of the show, definitely, you're going to see those people leaving at about the end of the show. So we'll be opening up the barricades, so allowing freer flow of traffic. Panther north to Donovan and Panther south to Main Street.
Okay, now, will the activities take place up until 9:00 when the fireworks go off, or will people be not doing anything for an hour in between? With the fireworks going on, what's going to be happening?
I'm not sure exactly, I believe they're going to go till about 8:00 PM on their schedule. They have the booths, and then they'll have music, entertainment, they have a band that will play. There will be no fireworks allowed on the campus itself, so we're not asking people to bring their own. There's no place to have a personal display of fireworks, and we will be enforcing it on the campus with, with the school there. And again, I mentioned, the police department will have enhanced enforcement that night for the illegal fireworks, and we'll be asking for their help as far as traffic control goes.
Okay, so there's going to be entertainment from 8:00 to 9:00 until it shows up?
Yes. It depends on the weather. Again, you know, if we get a quick fog bank, we may end up having to take the show a little earlier.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. Yes.
Your honor, well, I guess I'm throwing my two cents in, because on the Fourth of July, I would not assume that the full conspiracy of Marion Hospital and others in the area, and the high school students are certainly, come Thursday, with the situation, Pioneer Valley, and La Venta, and all the others, the traffic control is pretty darn organized because it's graduation at Pioneer Valley High School, and the streets and the reader signs, I assume, that will be out just like they are come Thursday for graduation, and you have to understand that it used to be that they had the high schools and the junior high schools there all day long, and so I think the traffic moved pretty well, and was not 700 cars at one time. Anyway, I'm going to have Valley parking in my neighborhood, so...
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hayden?
Mayor Pro Tem Waterfield, if I could, we do have in attendance Jan Glick, the Director of Animal Control at the County of Santa Barbara.
Fantastic.
Ms. Glick has helped this city from a educational standpoint, providing a lot of material for the pets in the area, and as far as radio spots are concerned, they have provided some funding to get the word out from an educational standpoint. So I'd like to welcome Ms. Glick and ask her to say a few words about the partnership that we've been working on to try to address the concerns that some of the residents have made with regards to pet ownership.
Thank you, please proceed.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of city council. As Mr. Hayden said, I'm Jan Glick, I'm the Executive Director of County Animal Services, and we've been very pleased to partner with the city, and, and we did attend the initial meeting with the community group. This is a topic that's close to our hearts, because so many animals are badly affected by fireworks. So I just wanted to go through a quick list of what we can do as pet owners, what, what can you do? This one seems like a no-brainer, don't take your pet to a fireworks display. Be sure that your pet is wearing identification and wearing its license. Keep your pets inside, you can turn on the, the TV, turn on the radio, close the windows, try to create, create a distraction for pets. Consider tranquilization if you have a highly sensitive pet and you know it, you should talk to your veterinarian in advance. And since Fourth of July is a Monday, then you're going to need to do that the week before in order to be prepared. We are going to have our crates available for loan, if pet owners would like to borrow a crate to keep their pet safe inside their home. And if your pet does go missing, come to the shelter. Our phones will be really busy, our shelters fill up. On the 5th of July, we will be staffed up with extra people to help our clients looking for lost pets, but the best thing to do is to come to the shelter if your pet is missing. And we've really been thrilled to work with the city on this as, as partners, and to do the PSAs and, and the radio spots, and I think it's going to make a big difference.
Fantastic. And where can they pick up the crates? Do you have an address?
548 West Foster, at our animal shelter. We're open from 9:00 to 4:45, Monday through Friday, and from 10:00 to 3:45 on Saturdays, we're closed on Sundays. And they can just come down, we'll have a checkout system for, for the crates, for people that might need to borrow a crate.
Fantastic, thank you. Any of the council members have any comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The city council will conduct a public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act and adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds in the amount of $5 million by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the benefit of People Self-Health Housing Corporation to provide for the financing of the Valentine Court project.
And Mr. Vizet, would you please give the report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, honorable mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, staff, and the public. We are here this evening to conduct the... We are here this evening to conduct the public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Financial Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. The California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. People's Self-Help Housing Corporation proposes to obtain tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $5 million to finance and refinance the acquisition, rehabilitation, and improvement of a 35-unit multi-housing development known as Valentine Court Apartments located at 280 East New Love in the city. The debt to be issued by CMFA will be the sole responsibility of People's Self-Help Housing Corporation and not the city. The city will have no financial legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. This is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. It is recommended that the city adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of Valentine Court Apartments. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the Code and the California Government Code, Section 6500 and the following. Representative CSMFA, CMFA, and People's Self-Help Housing is here tonight, and Mr. Travis Cooper and Morgan Benavito from People's Self-Help Housing, if there are specific questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. At this moment, Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence?
We have no correspondence.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition of this item?
We have no request to speak.
Then I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for a discussion or a motion.
I just have a question, if I could, Mr. Benavito.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We actually approved this same financing back on in 2014. Is there any reason why it wasn't able to be consummated until...
Yeah, we ended up changing our construction schedule, and there is an expiration time limit to this, so we ended up having to re-up the TEFRA hearing, so that's really the reason behind it.
What's your time schedule for doing the renovations for Valentine Court?
We now would like to close up financing in February, March of next year, I believe, if I'm going off memory, and then start construction soon after that.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate your efforts there in Valentine Court. It certainly assists some very low-income and special-needs population, and I'm sure that the $5 million will go a long way towards some needed renovations there.
Yes, exactly. Valentine Court is a senior residence, Valentine Court III, which is next door, is of special-needs residence, so it's in bad need of some updates.
No, it's great. I certainly appreciate your efforts there. With that, I would move to approve Resolution Number 2016-D70.
Wait, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any other discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rock.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Waterfield.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Thank you. The next order of business is another public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The City Council will consider an appeal by Libertine Brewing Company of the Planning Commission's denial of a conditional use permit to allow public serving uses such as beer tasting, limited retail sales, and tours in an existing 8,300 square-foot building located at 2325 A Street.
Staff report to be made by Community Development, Mr. Oppel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Madam Mayor, council members, good evening. Project before you this evening is a bit uncommon for us to bring a Planning Commission denial. We don't, really don't have too many of those. I can think of about three of them since I've been here. When we do that, we try to provide a more detailed staff report for you, so hopefully you've had...
Excuse me, Madam Protem Waterfield?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please, would you please ask people to speak into the microphone so I can hear it clearly?
Okay.
And someone up there is shuffling papers, so it sounds like static.
It wasn't me.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Just for a sound check, Madam Mayor, can you hear me okay now?
That sounds great.
Okay. Well, as I said, we did a more detailed staff report, which gave you a lot of the background information to this project, and then also, because it was a denial by the Planning Commission, we wanted you to understand where each of the commissioners that were able to vote on this project were coming from, and so there is a section in the staff report that has that as well. So we're going to start by discussing the project site. Let me get my, here we go. Libertine Brewing is on A Street. It's just south of West Bedaravia. We've got A here, and then Fairway Drive here, Skyway over on this side, so it kind of gives you an idea where it is, an industrial area. Santa Maria Brewing, which we'll be talking, or Santa Maria Brewing, which we'll be talking about a little bit later too, is down at this location, so just kind of give you an idea where those are at. CM zoning for this entire area, and that's what the building looks like from the front if you've had a chance to go by and look at it. These are our industrial condos, for lack of a better word. People own their own space, and for example, here for Libertine, the building is here, their parking is in the rear and in the front, but their lot that they own actually is the border here, so it runs to the middle of this parking area in the front, and then it's to the middle of the alley in the back. So each subsequent building has its own footprint, and so Libertine is here, and then there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven buildings, all the same, designed the same way, with their property lines going to the center of the parking area here. There are parking spaces that are specifically for their businesses, as well as open area in the back and additional parking. So that's how this is set up. It's different than any other situation that we've had for other industrial buildings within the city. There's normally a common lot where there's shared parking, but in this case, when you buy your space, you buy your parking spaces as well, so it's a little different. Just some of the project components. The A Street Business Center was constructed in 2007. Out of those five buildings or six buildings, there's 33 separate lots, and each of them, as I mentioned, have their building and parking on a single lot. This building itself is 8,300 square feet, and they're proposing about 750 feet to be converted to the tasting room and retail areas. There are seven customer parking spaces in front and 14 in the back. They, at this point, have a storing and bottling beer operation, and that's by right, they're allowed that in that zone district. The reason they have come to the city is to add the public service, serving component, which requires approval of the CUP. They have identified a limited tasting hours, which I'll go through in a little bit, limited seating, they've agreed to no food service or live entertainment, and then as part of the Planning Commission plan they came up with, or the appeal process, they came up with an alcohol safety plan and a parking management plan. Planning Commission really boiled down to two issues when the project was denied on April 20th. First, parking congestion, it just felt that because of the unique situation in this area, that parking was going to, or could be, a problem for them, and that also that it could have an adverse impact on the neighboring businesses based on comments that had come in during the public hearings. I wanted to give you some information on other tasting rooms in the city. We have four winery tasting rooms in industrial zones. We've got one winery tasting room in a commercial zone, and one brewery tasting room in industrial zone, and the addresses and the names are all listed on that slide. I can make that available to people if they're interested in seeing where those are actually are, if it's too hard to read. This is just a simple map of the city. The area up here is near the Stoll intersection, this Casa de Oro, I think it's called, or something like that, for a tasting room. That's the one that's in the commercial area, and then all these other tasting rooms are all in industrial or manufacturing. So it does happen in other parts of the city. Fortunately, those don't have the same parking issues because they are set up where it's a common parking lot for the businesses.
Excuse me, Mr. Oppel, can you give me the streets, names of those locations?
Sure. Yeah, the one that was in the commercial district, that's Casa de Oro, that's on South Nicholson, right next to Cool Hand Luke's, and then the McKee &amp; Phillips. I don't know if they're still in business, but there's another winery going in there right now, there at South Blosser, kind of across from the police department. The Tantera Winery is on West Gate Road, and there's Central Coast Wine Services, that's a large facility with multiple wineries on Aviation Way.
Is that a wine tasting facility as well?
Uh-huh. Each of these have wine tasting. And then Golden Bear Winery is pending, and that's the new one for the replacement on Blosser Road. And then Santa Maria Brewing is on Fairway Drive, and then now Libertine, which is before us tonight.
Thank you.
Some alternatives that we wanted to talk about to the operation, the original project description that came in. First, on April 6th with the Planning Commission meeting, at that time, they were discussing weekday being open from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, and then weekends from 11:00 AM to 10:00. The 14 patron limit, and then expansion with special conditions. When the project was denied on the 20th, the applicants came in with their appeal and then have now suggested Fridays from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, and then weekends, Saturday and Sunday, that is, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, same limit, 14 patron limit, and the parking based on the April 6th conditions. If you have specific conditions or questions about that, we can talk about that, but basically, they're allowing them 14 seats based on seven parking spaces, assuming two people per car. And then what staff has suggested is a possible alternative, is really the only way you can guarantee that there's sufficient parking, would be if it was an appointment-only situation. The applicant is not supportive of this, but if it turns out that might be the only way of getting the thing approved on appeal, is something they might want to consider. But we just added that as an additional alternative, just so you would see that we're looking at all the options and hoping that this would not be an issue if they had it as an The recommendations we have for you in the staff report tonight, number one is to uphold the Planning Commission denial, and we have a resolution that would do that, which supports the findings of the Planning Commission's denial based on public service issue and the parking that would be insufficient. The second one would be to actually grant the appeal, which is overturning the Planning Commission's denial, and within that resolution, there's wording that says, "If you go this direction, you need to let me know what conditions you want to have for the facility." We have a couple options in the draft CUP that's in your packet, but if you, for instance, you know, the days of operation, hours of operation, number of patrons, that sort of thing. So as we get to the evening, as we see who is, what the direction this is going, if the direction is for overturning, then I wanted to make sure that we had your understanding of what you feel would be the best conditions for the project. And I believe that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oppel. Is the applicant here? Would you like to make some comments?
Yes, please.
And please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Eric Newton. I reside at 6027 Altamira in San Luis Obispo. I'm representing Libertine Brewing Company. Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor, and council members. I come to you before, or come before you tonight to appeal a decision that was made by the Planning Commission to deny a brewery tasting room in our A Street location. With the city claiming to be such advocates of pro-business development, our team was shocked and still does not understand the reasoning why the Planning Commission would deny this use permit. Thankfully, we are fortunate that we have an opportunity to appeal to the council for the final decision. We are aware that you can review other factors, including the overall big picture that the Planning Commission may have overlooked or even misunderstood here. As a recap, our team worked closely with several departments within the city to obtain their support for this tasting room. City staff was very supportive in our business plan and very helpful in developing conditions that would alleviate any and all concerns of our surrounding neighbors. We feel that we've gone above and beyond to fully address any negative impacts that would arose from our neighbors by modifying and accepting certain conditions, including hours of operations, occupancy, parking plans, safety plans, and even parking agreements. At our first Planning Commission, the vote was, ended in a 2-2 tie. The only comments by the commissioners voting against us pertain to parking impacts and that of gaining support of a nine-person petition that had concerns on our operations. First, the parking concerns have been addressed. It seems that the Planning Commissioners did not understand that our hours of operation were off-hours, this meant after 5:00 PM and just weekends. These proposed hours would not affect any of the operations of the current residing businesses as the majority operate during normal business hours, eight to five. So in the original proposal, we have created a parking plan, and we created, executed parking agreements with our adjacent neighbors, which supported us. Our agreements gave us eight additional spaces beyond our seven that we had. This totaled 15 spaces for the 25 occupants we originally were limited to. Now, this seems really excessive since the tasting room would only be open off-hours when the majority of the parking area was already empty at this time. But more importantly, since our operations were off-hours, the development would benefit from those seven unused parking spots that would allow our neighbors to use during normal business hours. This was a very attractive point to our neighbors after they understood what our operations would be. Regarding the petition, we discovered that the originator spearheading the signing completely misrepresented our operations, claiming that we were a bar open seven days a week. This was not true. We took steps prior to the next Planning Commission meeting to contact these signers and other people that we haven't got a hold of in the development to educate them on our real operations by either meeting them in person, telephone conversations, and holding an outreach meeting. After discussing our true operations, the majority were in support or at least neutral on our CUP request. We have also addressed that our proposed tasting room is not a bar. It's a tasting room, our tasting room would resemble that of a wine tasting aspect, serving only our beers in a very comfortable setting. In all reality, there were only a few people in the, in all reality, there's only going to be a few people in the tasting room, as with wine tasting, on the average, just due to our current location on the outskirts of town and our hours of operation. We are a higher-end brewery with a higher price point and would cater to the professional clientele and more experienced beer consumers. We were really pleased with our outreach efforts as we only were familiar with one party that remained vocally against us out of the 41 other businesses in this industrial development. Support in this development, or support of us in this development was clearly in our favor by a large margin. We reported our positive findings in the second Planning Commission meeting, but unfortunately found that the commissioners already made their decision with regards to our fate due to the one known business that was currently against us. We have listened to this business owner in the last two meetings, and each time he claims that the tasting room will affect his business. While we respect his position, he provides no legitimate reasoning on how we would affect his business, not to mention doesn't even acknowledge all of the conditions that were put in place. Throughout the entire process, any concerns that were brought up by our neighbors were taken seriously and addressed immediately with either additional conditions or recommendations by staff. This location that we have is perfect for a brewery. Breweries must reside in industrial developments as their primary operations are storage, packaging, and processing. The tasting room would be a low-impact, secondary use that would allow the public to sample and enjoy taste of our beer, provide us with retail sales, and tours to educate the consumers on our brewery operations. The tasting room is a great, or would be a The tasting room is a great, or would be a great addition to the city and means to get consumers that, into the city that would not normally be visiting here. Please keep in mind that several conditions were put in place to prevent our tasting room from having any negative effect or impact to their surrounding businesses, such as, you know, using our off-hour operations, our parking plans, our safety plans, limited occupancy, and a six-month review period that the Planning Commission put on us. The City of Santa Maria Council needs to support their claim to be pro-business, as city staff has done in the last few months with us. Our team, along with city staff, has figured ways to coexist with the other neighbors in our development. We deserve a chance to prove this, and there are so many success stories on breweries and wineries existing in industrial parks all over the state of California, not to mention locally. You have Boulton, Tin City and Paso Robles, the Wine Gettler in Lompoc, the Funk Zone in Santa Barbara. These are all perfect examples of this success. As an additional point, there are other similar businesses such as Santa Maria Brewery and Moxie Cafe that are not more than a few box, blocks away, that received approval in the same conditional use and has successfully integrated into an industrial park setting. In addition, our industrial development has several other businesses that have conditional uses approved for the public aspect, such as the Climbing Wall Gym, and then also Martial Arts Academy, which reside just a few doors down from us. Both cater to the public similar to our request and have no issues in the same development. The only difference is, is we carry alcohol, which is not a negative factor here. We have two other locations that never had any issues with safety, individuals out of control, or a call for police services. We truly believe that our management of this process will have success at this location, and we currently have tremendous support in the community. We look forward to a bright future here in Santa Maria and hope by participating in local community events, we'll make a positive impression out of the community. We ask for your support of the local craft beer industry and support Libertine by approving our conditional use permit for our tasting room. Thank you so much for your time.
Do any of the council members have any questions for the applicant or staff?
I have some, a couple of questions for staff. When the, did the Climbing Wall and the Martial Arts require conditional use permits?
They both did, yes.
And did we have any opposition to those?
Not that I recall.
And how about Santa Maria Brewing? When they were established, do we have any opposition from local businesses around there?
Not that I recall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have one question for staff and then a couple of questions for the applicant. So my one question for staff is, is there an avenue for recourse if we should approve it? And there are then mitigating issues that come up in the future that are sustained?
Yes. As with any conditional use permit or planned development that we issue in the city, if there is found to be a violation of permit conditions or the findings for approval, they can be brought back to the Planning Commission to be considered for either new conditioning or reduction in the size of the operation or revocation of the permit.
Right, thank you. And then if the applicant could come, I have just a couple of questions. So I, and I need to do, you know, just provide a disclosure that I met with Mr. Sims today, and I came by your establishment and talked to an employee who was just really nice and helpful, and then just walked the neighborhood and talked to the neighbors that were there as well.
Of course.
To make that public. So I'm, so when I went in, it was just kind of this empty space, and he kind of showed me where he thought, you know, the operation would happen in terms of the tasting. So can you explain to me, one of the things that we received when we were doing community outreach about the downtown specific plan and how we could make our community more amenable to the people who live and work here, was there were a lot of people who came and said, "We need someplace and things for young adults and professionals to do and participate in." So I'm not a beer taster and I'm not a wine tasting. So can you, so I'm curious about, there's not going to be music, there's not going to be any live entertainment, there's not going to be food. I don't understand kind of what is the entertainment value that this would draw, young people and, you know, professionals? And then secondarily to that is, what is the limit on, so tasting? I don't understand what that is. Can they taste till they're drunk? Or is there limits? I mean, I don't really get that because I don't do wine tasting.
Okay, I'll take one question at a time here. First, I mean, the primary operation of our business in that building is, like I said, packaging, processing, and bottling right there. So that's what houses our main operations right there. But having that secondary, low-impact tasting room where we can have people show up, taste the beer as soon as it gets done, have the tours, educate them on the process. Most people, when they go tasting, like in wine, but in beer now, is that they want to see the process. They want to know, "How do you guys do what you do?" So that's one of the reasons why we have this little aspect of our business, just to educate people. And most people want to know, "Hey, how did this get in the bottle? What am I drinking right here?" And with regards to tasting, we're just like a winery. We sign, we, a few ounce pours, you know, taste, or you can just go enjoy one glass of the beer. But most people have their tastings and then pick a bunch of bottles like they do in wine tasting, and they move on to the next tasting avenue. Like they'll go, will probably capitalize off of Santa Maria Brewing. This, Santa Maria Brewing would benefit from us because we're bringing people into that area now that would want to go taste us and then taste them, not just going there for one location. So we'll have multiple people feeding off each other.
So it'd be like a wine tour thing?
Exactly.
Okay, so I get that, thanks. And so the entertainment value is being able to go and tour, see the production, you know, ask questions, find out how, what you're drinking and made.
How do you get this in the bottle? Like, are, where our label are there, our bottling machine there, all our barrels are there. If they see that and how the process goes from the barrel, how it ferments in there and gets in the bottle, then they see the entire process, and they're like, "Oh, I get it now."
And you mentioned in your presentation that your outreach, or that you're hoping to draw in, you know, professionals. Do you have a marketing outreach plan? How will you be outreaching and who will you be marketing? How will you do that marketing?
Well, our names, you know, every month that goes on, our name is like getting out there and stuff. And our brewer, you'll hear from him during Open Public right here, and he'll demonstrate, or he'll explain our process and everything like that. And we're a sour beer facility, so we're just getting the edge of the market right there. We're just creating this huge buzz. Now, every brewery is going, doing sours now. So it's like a fad that's taking off right here. So it's interesting. He'll explain that process.
Thank you. And then can you share, so I know that you received some, I think they were called parking agreements with other tenants. Can you tell me how many tenants signed parking agreements with you?
Correct. We have, well, we didn't get to the point where we signed them yet because we're still in the process of getting through the CUP here. But our two next, our next-door neighbors, White Seed and then Corderas Brothers, have both agreed to, "Here, you guys can use our parking at night, we'll use your parking during the day." And we offered this to other people in the neighborhood too, that since we're not using this, we understand that the Planning Commission went out there on a 2 o'clock on, you know, during a weekday. Of course, it's going to be busy there. But how we're going to benefit the development is, we're not having anybody using those seven spaces before 5:00. So after, during that timeframe, they can go ahead and use our parking, and then after that, we made agreements between other people, then we use their parking after the off-hours.
And then just finally, thank you. Finally, so you did one or two outreach meetings with the tenants?
We did one outreach meeting.
And how many people, how many of the tenants attended?
We had 12, we had about 12 people show up. All were for the businesses in that area. We invited everybody that we could. It was Friday at about 4:30, and we believe, you know, all the people that signed in were at least supporting or neutral by the time we got done with our meeting.
And to that end, can you kind of just give me a sense of the meeting? So were there questions that you were able to clarify? Was there things that people didn't understand? Or did you come to some sort of agreements with each other? I'm just wondering, you know, with the tenor and the alcoy.
No, I think the meeting was the gist of, there were so many rumors about what was going on there, and there were so many things that were made up about our operations. What we wanted to do in that outreach meeting is clarify exactly who we are, what we're doing, our hours of operation, our occupancy, parking, all the things that, how we would benefit our neighbors. And by the time they actually understood our operations and who we were, they were very supportive of what we're doing.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, Councilmember Ora, do you have any comments?
Well, you answered the question about the parking, because I guess that was, that was basically my issue. But I guess when you had your reach out and the folks came aboard, I wasn't invited, and did you serve?
Please come back to the podium.
Tasting. I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Eric.
Anyway, and so I guess, along with the ability to sign a mutual aid agreement for parking, I guess my question then would go to Mr. Appel, that if those, I don't want to say "could we," could we condition the CUP to a point that unless you can furnish alternate parking venues, that it would not be through if we overturned the status of the Planning Commission?
The conditions have been set based on what I mentioned earlier. One space per two patrons.
Correct.
And so with seven spaces, they're allowed to have 14 patrons maximum. The conditions also said they could go up to 20 during the first year if they had additional parking. So basically, if they pick up three more parking spaces, they could go up to 20. But that's the max regardless of the number of spaces they have until at the end of the first year. If they, if there are no complaints, then we allow them to move up to 25 patrons at a time, and then they would need 13 spaces for that.
And then?
And they're already well above that if they sign the agreements with those other two businesses there. So it seems like the parking issue would be resolved through the agreements that they're setting up right now.
Okay. Well, I guess just a comment, I don't know if that's in order at this time, but because of the restriction of food and stuff like that, and drinking some wine on occasion and visiting wineries, in a lot of cases, people are taking their groceries with them and buying a bottle and going outside, and you don't have that capacity at your facility, frankly, to do that. So from that entertainment aspect, it's really restricted to just tasting and visiting and seeing how it's, how it's done, as I perceive it anyway.
Correct, yeah. We have some distribution out in the area right there, but a lot of people are going to come to the facility to just to taste the new stuff that our brewer does. I mean, he's on the cutting edge of everything, and people, anything that new is small quantities, and people want to be the first to get there and get ahold of it.
Okay, thank you.
Don't sit down, Aaron. Madam Mayor, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have a question as to when the property was purchased, that you were aware of the limitations or the restrictions of the zoning. So you were aware that you could not have a tasting room, correct?
We had several meetings with staff, and we were, we approached them before we even bought the building on, "Hey, what's the possibility of this?" They said it shouldn't be an issue. We went through several rounds with them, but then the owner...
Okay, I can't, I can't hear you real well, so if you could speak slower and speak into the microphone.
Okay, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay. We did meet with the staff prior to purchasing the building. We went through a bunch of conditions that they would have for us. We agreed to a lot of that stuff, and basically what it came down to is this, the timeframe of getting this done in time, the, our escrow would have expired and we'd have lost the building, so we were forced to go ahead and move forward with the building.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just one moment. Councilmember Ora, or Boyson?
I'm Boyson, yeah.
You guys look alike.
Now we, now we are going to have a fight. But, Mr. Newton, you were aware that this did require a conditional use permit, and that the conditional use permit is specifically designed to provide public input as to the appropriateness of uses that are specifically allowed under our zoning and our municipal code. Is that, that is correct?
Correct, yeah.
I mean, staff did not mislead you on that?
Correct. They said that, you know, we still have to go through the process, and there might be people that, you know, aren't attracted to something like this, correct. But we did our due diligence with the asset manager, everything, and then just some things, you know, happened where people don't agree on some items.
No, I understand. But I just, I want to make sure that, you know, we are pro-business.
Correct.
We're business-friendly, but I just want to make sure that at a staff level, we were, we were not indicating to you that, you know, this is a slam dunk.
Staff was great. They were so helpful through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Now it's my turn. I'm really curious about your hours, because in wine tasting hours, they don't seem to go into the evenings from 5:00 to 10:00. And why is beer tasting different than that? And what is so great about your product that people want to come? You haven't explained to us what kind of beer you have and what's really great about it.
Well, obviously, we started the CUP on, you know, other hours than, but, you know, when you get to the point where you affect the operations of our other business, so that's why we agreed to, okay, let's start our hours after everybody of the normal has left the area and done with their business. So we made, as this process developed right here, we made concessions on when our hours were. So we were wanting to open up at 3:00 during the week, but, you know, we heard some, some people that this would impact our business, so we modified our hours to make that, to make them happy.
So this isn't a normal, these aren't normal business hours for beer tasting?
You know what? Everybody likes to come after work and, you know, taste or grab some, it's just like wine tasting. Most wineries, you know, during the week, you're right, are open till like 5:00 p.m., but we got to take, in our location, we got to take what we can get right here. So that, we modified our hours to, you know, and then, but beer tasting's a little bit different. People come after work to taste some beer too. So we're trying to go after that, the professional crowd that's over in that airport industrial area, "Hey, come by us during, after work," you know, use, you know, introduce our stuff to them through that.
Now, will you be selling the beer to go? Do you package it up and sell it to go like wineries do?
Yeah, we have a license, I think it's 24, if I remember right, where we can only serve our own beer, and then we can do growlers or bottle sales out of our retail area right there. And then, it's just like wine, you take it to go with you.
So these hours are going to be from 5:00 to 10:00, should we go with or deny the, what's in front of us? But from 5:00, people are going to be hungry, and so you're not going to provide any food. Is food going to be allowed, are the customers going to be allowed to bring the food into their facility?
We have several, some of our locations, or one of our locations, people do bring their own food in there. But we're not allowed, unless we clear that with ABC, and we clear that with the City of Santa Maria, we're not allowed to serve food at that location. But if we, if we use, look at our license, we're allowed three locations to serve food. Right now, we have one location in Morro Bay that we're serving food, and our San Luis location is going through Phase 2 in a little bit, which we will be serving food there too.
Does ABC allow customers to bring food in? That's my question.
Yes, they do.
They do. Will the city allow, is that one of the conditions that we may put on these, if it goes through, to not allow food because you're, you don't want this to turn into a pub-type of a business?
Well, right now, condition number six talks about prohibited uses, and that includes food preparation, food sales, and the serving of food products and any type of entertainment. So it doesn't address the issue of bringing something in.
Okay.
If that's something you would want added to it, we could certainly do that. If you feel this is sufficient, then we can leave it.
Okay. And my other question is, how many employees do you have?
Oh, um...
In this particular location?
At this particular, particular location, we'll have between three or four, including Tyler, a brewer, back in the back, and then we'll probably have one or two, if the tasting room is approved, working the tasting room up front.
Okay. And the estimated salaries that each one of these employees receive?
Um, well, I can't talk about Tyler's.
Is it minimum wage or is it higher?
No, our, most of our employees are between $12 and $22 an hour.
Okay, $12 and $22. Okay. And my other question is, what makes your beer so wonderful that people will want to leave work at 5:00 and come and see you?
I am going to defer that to Tyler when he comes up and...
Fantastic.
He's ready to come.
So is Tyler here?
Tyler Clark, everybody.
Tyler, please state your name and address for the record.
Tyler Clark, 360 Gilardi, Arroyo Grande.
And are you the brewmaster?
I don't consider myself a brewmaster. I'm the founder and president, and I brew beer, yes.
Okay. Talk about your beer.
We here all day. No, so we do wild spontaneous beer, where we're using barrels, and they're called Cool Ships. It's open fermentation, so we're actually allowing the wild yeast strains that are floating around in our environment to actually ferment it. So instead of, 99.9% of breweries are buying a cultured yeast from a lab that everybody from Sierra Nevada to Santa Maria Brewing will use. And it's great yeast and I'm nothing against it, but our take on it is we let the natural microbes in our area create it. So we're actually giving an actual flavor of the central coast. So that was like one of the big, big things about starting this brewery was. My wife and I are born and raised here. We lived in Santa Cruz. We lived in San Diego. We moved back to start a family here and what can we do to showcase our region and create something unique? So we do a lot of collaborations with tons of different wineries, using wine grapes to blend, a lot of different fruits. Everything's aged in wine and spear barrels. It all goes through that open fermentation process. So call them wild beers, sour beers. We've actually started our own kind of nomenclature, central coast sour beers is one of our things. So really trying to tie it back to the region. We've got beers called Edna Valley Saison, we've got Central Coast Saison, we're Moro Rock. We've got, our big thing is showcasing our region here. So that was one of our main things of opening the Santa Maria Valleys because we get a lot of our fruit and stuff from here. In fact, we just made a beer with Gary Vineyard Chardonnay, which is just on the outskirts of Santa Maria too, so.
Okay, my next question is, will you be creating this beer at this specific location?
So right now, we are actually brewing the beer in San Luis Obispo. So the actual beer itself gets made there. It sits overnight in an open top, like I said, cool ship, which is a big shallow kind of metal dish looking thing. And then the next day, it gets trucked down to Santa Maria where it gets racked into big oak punching barrels, which is about twice the size of a normal wine barrel you would see, that we source all from different wineries and distilleries in the area. And then from there, it'll age anywhere from three months to three years, just depending on the type of beer we're trying to do and the blend. It's mainly blending. We're almost, we're brewers, but we're more blenders than we are brewers. That's where the real process starts, so.
And how long have you been in this business?
The beer industry I've been in since I was 18. I'm 31 now. So before I could even drink, I was stocking shelves for Central Coast Distributing, based here in Santa Maria, and worked in the beer business in Santa Cruz, San Diego. Came back and then started Libertine a little over four years ago now.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking all these questions is that I did not have an opportunity to come and see your facility. I did have an opportunity, this is for disclosure, to speak to Mr. Sims and he walked me through his process of operation too.
Sure.
So that's why I'm asking you the questions is I want to get a full understanding of what you do and how you do it and why people would want to come and visit you and try your beers out.
Yeah, and we're very community oriented. We do canned food drives all the time. We really like to involve not just the different businesses and beer people, but anything we can get. And we have club meetings at our place with, you know, home brewers and it's really a community thing that it isn't just a, oh, we make alcohol, drink a couple of those and get out of here. It's really, you know, collaborating with different businesses, not just in the beer or wine industry, but farmers. We work really closely with a lot of farmers in our area. You know, feeding our spent grain that normally gets stored in the trash to the pigs that then we slaughter and then bring into our pub that we serve and just all kinds of fun projects like that that really, you know, boosts not just us or not just the beer, but all kinds of businesses that we're associated with, so. But we have, with Eric's on the number of people, we actually have over 30 people that work for us now over our three locations and we would add at least six more for the Santa Maria too, if we could have the taste.
And are your beers sold just locally or is it worldwide?
No, it's, yeah, we're actually in Sweden, England. I believe Appel just landed in France. We're packaging up for Quebec, Canada because we did a collaboration with a brewery there. They flew out and we brewed beer with them. So we're actually starting to send that collaboration along with. A distributor picked us up there too because they're really excited about the project and our beer. I've been all over the country the last few months, Florida, Philadelphia. It's, yeah, it's definitely growing and we're getting invites and it's pretty exciting, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do any of the council members have any questions for Tyler? Okay, thank you.
Oh, I kind of hit most of the stuff. I just, yeah, I just wanted to say get on the four years in business, a little over four years now. And the first year in Morro Bay, we actually took over a pub that had hard alcohol. It was much more of a party place. We actually, almost two years ago, got rid of that completely. So we, because it's not the crowd. It didn't help our business. That's not what we wanted. And we actually got rid of hard alcohol and stuff with the license. Changed our licensing around just to focus on brewing and being a brewery and a tasting room. And even with those year, year and a half that we had that, we had not one phone call to the police department. We've never had one issue with ABC. We've had a stellar track record in Morro Bay and now in San Luis Obispo after being almost open a year. And, yeah, I know, my daughter that's four like makes half our beer with us and she's running around. This isn't like some party bar, you know, crazy thing, so. I don't know, I just wanted to, and the parking spot, if it's really a parking issue, I think we've dealt with that and we've said, okay, well then seven spots gives us 14 spaces. We own those spaces. We should at least, I feel like we're kind of getting punished for future success if we even have that, you know? And I want to just at least have a chance to open up. And, you know, if it becomes successful and we can't fit enough people and we got to do it, great. Then we'll buy a bigger building and do another tasting room that's larger and can do it. We're not here to bum anybody out and ruin everybody's business and cause a scene. It's a community oriented thing and a small tasting room that's open a couple of days a week, so we can tell our story, so.
Okay, thank you. I believe Councilmember Boyson has a question.
Is your operation in Morro Bay, is that in a commercial manufacturing district?
No. So that's a brew pub. That's right on the water in Morro Bay. It's a restaurant. It's two stories, a front pub, a back pub on the water, has a full kitchen. It's much more of a restaurant based and we actually took all the brewing out of that location. We still have some barrels aging there, but the actual production of beer is now all in San Luis Obispo and then all the packaging, aging and distribution is all from Santa Maria now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence?
City staff has received six written communications. Richard Meyer, Mike McKivin, Tom Durant, and Scott Lalou wrote in support of the Planning Commission's denial. And Eric Newton and Diana Beck wrote in opposition of the Planning Commission's denial of the CUP. Copies of the written correspondence have been provided to you at the diocese this evening and are available on the city's website.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to open up this portion of the public hearing to the public. And Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition of this item?
We have 12 requests to speak in favor and five against.
Okay. And I would like to take those in favor first.
And I wonder, Madam Mayor Protem, if you could ask the individuals that are speaking, both in favor and against, where they reside?
Okay, thank you. Okay, our first request to speak is Rosetta Newton. And Ms. Newton, if you could come to the podium, please, and state your name and your address and where you reside.
Hello, I'm Rosetta Newton at 6027 Altamira in San Luis Obispo. I'm one of the property owners and one of the partners in Libertine Brewing Company. I'm familiar with addressing parking and alcohol issues. I'm on the board of directors for the Downtown Slow Association and I'm also co-chair one of the committees there. It's a food and beverage committee. And we meet once a month with owners and managers of bars and restaurants, tasting rooms such as ours and wine tastings rooms as well. And we discuss any issues or concerns that has occurred or could occur in the city. And we meet with police department regularly and they come into our meetings. And I'm happy to say that Libertine has never had one single complaint, so that's good there. We did have a petition online and as of about a half an hour ago, it's almost up to 600. And that was just on one social media website. And it's been up for just about two weeks now. If I could, I would just like to read one of them that kind of stood out to me. "I'm both a resident and employer of the city of Santa Maria. Has been difficult to attract and retain the high-quality employees our local businesses deserve due to the lack of diverse social opportunities within the city. Approving projects like Libertine would be a great step in the right direction as we build more vibrant city atmosphere that can compete with neighboring cities."
Ms. Newton, can you speak into the microphone? We do have our mayor and she cannot hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Basically, just to sum it up, this person that made the comment, Nathan Eadie, is just talking about diverse social opportunities that he would like to see in the city and it would, you know, bring a more vibrant city atmosphere that can compete with neighboring cities. So, you know, keep more tax sellers here, bring people from out of other areas to spend money going to other restaurants, you know, hotels and so forth. I'm also a Realtor and I got a call today from Mindbody, which is one of the biggest employers in San Luis Obispo County and they're rated as one of the top 10 companies in the nation as an employer and they're looking here in Santa Maria. One of their concerns that they addressed to me was the fact that they're concerned about, you know, the type of people that they recruit and how they recruit and retain them because they're 30-something tech employees. And, you know, Libertine is one of those recreation or aspects that would entice or retain someone such as an employee such as that. So any type of small business such as this, I think, would be beneficial to bringing a company like that to Santa Maria, which would definitely enhance the economic vitality of the city. And I think, you know, that's kind of all I wanted to point out. I did want to say, you know, Tyler's very modest, but he's kind of a big thing in the beer world and I'm myself not a big beer drinker. I prefer wine. But it really is an experience. It's not about going in and tasting beer. It's about the whole package rather than drinking it.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could ask everyone that will be speaking, we're going to keep this to three minutes, but if you could speak clearly into the microphone so that Madam Mayor Patino can hear you, that would really help out a lot. Our next speaker is Stacy Dunlap. Ms. Dunlap, please state your name and address, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Stacy Dunlap, 2361 A Street, Santa Maria, California.
Is that where you reside?
No.
Where do you reside?
179 Eileen Lane in Santa Maria.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the office manager at Fisher Pump and Well Service and I'm speaking on behalf of Fisher Pump and Well Service with David S. Fisher's approval. We are in support of Libertine Brewing and have verbally agreed with them that we can use their parking spaces during the day and they can use ours during the evening. We will sign a document stating such. We own two buildings, so that gives them additional eight spaces. We initially signed the petition against Libertine Brewing, but upon further investigation on our part, we found that we had been misled. Attending the community outreach meeting with Libertine staff and review of the conditional use permit and its restrictions, we felt we had accurate information to base a decision of support. We notified Mr. Sims to rescind our signature. We do not feel that having Libertine Brewing as a neighbor will impact our business in a negative way. We feel that it will add some diversity to our complex and community, which is what we believe the city of Santa Maria is also striving for. We have established an open line of communication with Tyler and Eric from Libertine and we feel that any concerns that we have, they would address them immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And if I may ask, that, we do not have any clapping after each person, so we can move everything along. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Protem?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
You said those in favor. Now, are you talking about those in favor of holding the Planning Commission? Or those in favor of overturning the Planning Commission?
In favor of overturning the Planning Commission is what it is. They're speaking in favor of Libertine being able to have their tasting room here.
Okay, I wasn't clear on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next speaker is Eric Newton. Okay, you're Eric, okay. You're the Eric, okay. Sean Zubriger. And Sean, please state your name and place of residence.
Sorry. How are you doing? My name is Sean Zubrigan. I live at 475 South Bay Boulevard in Morro Bay. I am the general manager of the Libertine Brewing Company. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council for letting us speak tonight. I would like to start out by saying that this tasting room is very important to our business. The room allows us to showcase our products and offsets some of the high cost of running a craft brewery.
Oops. She needs... You're done.
Yeah, that was...
I don't mess around.
So we age all of our ales for months, if not years, because we respect what we do and the product that we want to introduce to our customers. That is why our tasting room is slow. We put the same amount of effort into educating our customers on our products and processes as well. This would be the same for Santa Maria. One of the seems like main complaints is that we are operating a bar and that is not the case. We compare our tasting room to that of a winery's tasting room more than anything else. We are not naive and we know that with alcohol, there's always the element of the unknown. That being said, we have already had proven methods of properly serving and controlling our guests. Tyler and myself are both lead certified and make sure to keep up with all the latest ABC policies and proper certain methods and we use that to train our staff as well. I firmly believe that properly educating staff and consumers as well promote responsible drinking. We have had no noise complaints with the city of San Luis Obispo and we are actually by a high-end residential area as well. Also, in the four years that we have conducted business in Morro Bay, we have had no complaints either with that location either and that is a full-service restaurant featuring two bars as well. In fact, we have worked with the mayor and chamber of commerce in Morro Bay to host or help out with multiple city events and we are always doing things to help out the community and local businesses as well. Such things have included food drives, donations to charities, sponsoring events, and even buying and dealing with local businesses whenever possible. Our brewery even helps out the local agricultural community by supplying our spent grain for livestock. We want to be part of the community as much as we want to operate our business and that's why we chose Santa Maria because we figured we would be a great addition to some of the fine businesses already in the area. I know that Santa Maria has been working on a sign on the 101 to promote, you know, people coming to the city and one city official was even quoted saying, "The purpose is to welcome the public to Santa Maria and let them know that they're actually in the city after they cross the bridge and that we'd like them to come to Santa Maria, visit the city, visit our shops and come and explore." Well, we would be another prime example of why people would want to come to the city and explore the area. A sign like this makes us believe that the city is open to new things and wants businesses that attract new people that would probably never know where the city is and would just keep on driving by and not even blink an eye. One thing I'd like to touch base with for the hours, the questions on the 5:00 to 10:00, we pretty much have similar hours in our slow location and it seems to work out fine for us. I myself and a lot of the people in this room do work days, so, you know, being in a bar or wine tasting facility at, you know, noon on a Monday afternoon is probably not the best thing for their career. So, you know, people that do get off later in the afternoon want a place to maybe unwind or talk or visit, take their significant other out as well. That being said, our Morro Bay location...
Thank you, Sean.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Our next speaker is Nathan Eadie, if I'm reading it right. And please state your name and place of residence.
Nathan Eadie. I'm a resident of Santa Maria. I live at 855 Melinda Court, which is over in the Sunrise Hills area. I am also a manager of a local business. I run a environmental engineering company that is close enough to the project. You can actually see it in the aerial photograph on the slide there. We're about two long blocks away. Previous speaker kind of stole my thunder a little bit. I didn't realize I was a talented writer, I guess, but I'll repeat a little bit of what I, you know, wrote and submitted to the Planning Commission, hoping that they'd make a different decision on this project. As a resident, I would love to see this business here. I relocated here almost 10 years from San Diego and it pains me to go back and visit my brother and see all the amazing microbreweries that are showing up in the San Diego area and I love to see... And I'd love to see more of that entertainment and economic opportunity come to Santa Maria. As a business manager, my primary employee that I try and recruit is a college graduate out of Cal Poly. They have the exact education experience that I need. They probably already like the Central Coast. I have hired six Cal Poly graduates in the last four years. I pay everyone starting from $50,000 and up. I have only gotten one out of those six employees to ever live in the city of Santa Maria, even though I encourage them to live here because it cuts down on their commute time and there is great housing here at an affordable cost. Five out of the six have never lived south of Nopomo, and most of them stay right in San Luis Obispo because the greater nightlife, the more vibrant community, more things to do after they get off work. And this is, was brought to my attention by my employees was the first time I heard about it, because it is that important to them that they wanted us to pay attention and participate to bring another opportunity to the city, to make it a more vibrant place for them to live and not just to work. And I would like to not be the training program for my competitors in San Luis Obispo. I hire these graduates. I spend a lot of time training them. They usually work for us for about two years, and then they accept a job in San Luis Obispo so they no longer have to commute. As a profession, I'm also a city planner, and so I understand the permitting process quite well. And this is exactly what conditional use permits were invented for. You have the ability to revoke the permit. You have the ability to reconsider some of the conditions. So, just give the libertine a chance to prove that they can be as much of a community partner as they have been in their previous locations. And if they're not, you retain the power to take that permit away. But you might as well at least give them the chance and show that they can be a wholesome part of this community and give us something to do. And one other thing is that, you know, I didn't hear them clarify it before, but this is not a cost or chemically-based beer that you're going to want to consume in large quantities. At about $15 per bottle and very heavy on your stomach, you go and you taste it for the taste. You don't go and buy a $100 bottle of wine or a $90 bottle of Scotch to get drunk, and this is the same type of alcohol. Thank you.
And just to let you know that when that light turns yellow, we have 30 seconds left. Kind of card. And our... Do you know your last name? Stacy Dunlap.
Good evening. My name is Josh Gordillo. I reside at 519 El Nido. I've been in Santa Maria for a little over a year now. I moved from Ventura County, so I'm very familiar with being in this type of room talking about opening up craft breweries. I'm also a working professional, so the audience that you were wondering about, that's me. Monday through Friday, I wear a button-up collared shirt. I'm purposely wearing a T-shirt and a hat. The shirt is from Beulton, Firestone Walker's Sour Facility Barrel Works. The hat is from Casa Agria, a brand-new brewery in Oxnard in an industrial park similar to the one that libertine is hoping to have a taproom in. I was also in another council meeting where local businesses opposed a taproom in an industrial area. They did get an outpouring of support from local community members, and they were granted the permission to have this brewery. They are close to being open for a full year with zero complaints. The hours that were discussed in regards to who goes to a brewery after 5 o'clock, that would be me. I work nine to six most of the time. These beers are not the type of beers that you have after a hard day's work where you go to your local liquor store and buy a 24-pack and all asleep. These beers are usually served in three-ounce pours. I wish it was more, but it's three-ounce pours. For that same reason, it's the ability to taste. These sour beers originated in Europe. They've been around for hundreds of years. They're low in gravity, ABV, alcohol by volume. So, if you have the mindset of wanting to get drunk, you're going to be drinking for dozens of hours. So, it has the same aspects of tasting as wine without the drunkenness of drinking three bottles of Chardonnay. The, you know, I can tell you honestly, coming from Ventura County, when I first moved in in 2004, they had only one brewery. Since leaving there over a year ago, they have close to 14. There are no issues in regards to public safety. I understand as a business manager of a multimillion-dollar company in Santa Maria that employs upwards from 29 to 36 employees, if another local business came to me and said, "Hey, you should be worried about your female associates. There could be drunk people trying to molest, harass," I might sign that same paper. I can assure you, doing a quick Google search, you will find no cases of anybody being harassed or molested coming from a brewery. So, as a business owner, I can understand. I'd sympathize, and that makes a lot of sense. But there aren't the facts to prove that, and I challenge anybody that is in opposition to give me that, and I will gladly eat my hat. But that's not the case. So, that's it. My name is Josh again, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
My next speaker is Jeremiah Cooper.
Hello, my name is Jeremiah Cooper, and I'm from Rancho Cucamonga, California. It's about four hours away from here. The reason I'm here is, oh, I'm also the president and the owner of King's Brewing Company, as well as I'm on the CCBA, the California Craft Brewers Association. And the reason I'm here is, I've been hearing a lot of different things, you know, that you guys have, the questions you have and some of the answers and stuff. A brewery, as a brewery owner, I see families come in with their children, and we have games on the counter, whether, you know, board games, whatever it is. They come in with their dinner from In-N-Out. They grab a board game. They sit down with their children. Me, as an owner, I like to walk out and give the kids a soda or a cotton candy or whatever it is for free. You know, it's a really different environment than people are portraying it as. You know, this is a 100% family environment where you come in with your family, you have a beer, and you take off. You don't sit there for hours with your children. It's a totally different environment than people think it is. You know, it's kid-friendly. It's pet-friendly. You're allowed to bring your dog in there. It's not the environment that, you know, people are saying it is. I have a three-minute, three minutes, right? I was just curious, because none of the other subjects have three minutes. That's right. Oh, okay.
You're losing your three minutes.
Well, I was very happy with what you said at the beginning. You know, I was impressed, actually, by the opening prayer and the fairness and common sense. I mean, that was, I really don't see those opening prayers and stuff at these type of meetings, and it was, it stood out a lot to me. So, why did I come so far? You know, to come and talk for Tyler. It's because, like they said, he makes a totally different kind of beer. You know, like, I'm four hours away. I still got to drive four hours home, wake up 6:00, go to my brewery in the morning, and start brewing my beer. But you got to understand, there's yeast floating in this air right now that he can make beer with in this room. All you are breathing is the yeast in the air that he can make beer with in this room. This is something that is amazing. I mean, I don't know if you think it is, but if you take a wine barrel that has Chardonnay, you empty it out and you put a beer in it, right? And you let it age for a year, and it takes all the tannins and the different things from the leather, and it imparts into the beer, now you have a totally different beer, you know? So, something like this isn't easy to make. You know, and for me to see, you know, how far he's come in a short period of time, it's because people have to get behind and help. It's a community. We all help each other. And it's a totally different environment than people, you know, see it as. Thank you. You have any questions?
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Caitlin Willig.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Willig. I, up until last month, was a resident at 803 Millstone Avenue in San Maria. I have recently relocated up to the Morro Bay area to be a little closer to the brewery. I come before you today as a young woman in the brewing industry. I recently relocated from the Long Beach area to come and live up here with my sister who lives in Santa Maria currently. And I only had one place in mind that I wanted to work when I did relocate, and that was libertine brewing company. Living in the LA area and having access to some of the world's best breweries, I, at multiple bottle shares, often on any day at work, I would have people come in with a bottle of libertine saison or some other great fruited sour that I would get to enjoy. And so, I was really impressed, and I knew that when I was relocating that that was the place I wanted to be at. And about six weeks before I relocated, I interviewed with Tyler, and he brought me into the libertine family. You asked earlier, what makes the beer so great? And what makes the beer so great is the people. We are a community, a family, and we make a product that is appealing to a lot of people. But what I do day in and day out is I have this sense of community with my guests, with my patrons. I'm currently the libertine tasting room manager. I'm very nervous. I didn't think I'd be so nervous up here. But I would just like to say that through education and training, we can have all of our staff properly assure that we will not let this get out of hand, that this is something that people who respect beer come to our tasting room to drink, to taste, to bring bottles back to their bottle shares other parts of the world. And we do, we create really good, strong bonds with other restaurants, other breweries, other small businesses. From Audrey Sophie and Slow Coast Turkey, you know, we do have all these great relationships with other people in our community. And I just hope that we can get this thing off the ground so that other young women like myself can further their careers in the brewing industry. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Gemma Wilson.
Hello, my name is Gemma Wilson. I reside at 9109 Arboleda Rosa Way in Atascadero. I am the media manager for Firestone Walker Brewing Company. We originated in Beulton, California, just 30 minutes from here. We now have our main brewery in Paso Robles. We proudly employ over 400 people here on the Central Coast. We are one of the top 20 breweries in the nation, and I say this as we welcomed the libertine brewing to the Central Coast now four years ago. We are so excited to have them as our neighbor, as well as several other Central Coast breweries that have opened up in the past few years. And we are becoming a destination location for so many people to visit this area, as now we have, you know, multiple breweries, and we're only expanding further down the coast as we go. We, speaking upon hours of night, we have our barrel works and our taproom in Beulton, both open until 9:00 or 10:00 PM on weekends. Again, it is a place where people come, have small tastes after work. Everyone is very respectful. We have never had any issues with any of our patrons. This is a very artisan business. It's a very farm-to-table. As Tyler pointed out, he's close with a lot of farmers, as are we. We all, you know, source in this amazing agricultural area a lot of fruits that we can put into our beers and, again, bring many, many tourists to the area. I do not think in any way that this would have a negative impact on this community. I think it would bring so many people to this area, which is definitely what's needed, because right now you have many people going to Beulton where you have Figaro, Mountain, and Firestone Walker, and they're skipping over Santa Maria to go straight to San Luis Obispo. This is a good opportunity to make this part of the map. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gemma. Our last speaker in favor is Brant Myers.
My name is Brant Myers, and I reside at 1220 Ocean Air Drive in San Luis Obispo, California. Madam Mayor, Mayor Protemp, and council members, I come on behalf of my business, Hop On Beer Tours, and I'm also the board of directors for the city of San Luis Obispo's Slow Beer Week, providing opportunities for people to come from not only with, in the county, the state, but also within the country to experience beer tourism. With my business, we've also visited over 20 tasting rooms in Slow and Santa Barbara County, over 10,000 people. And again, I can speak for days about the safety, the camaraderie, and the community of beer, craft brewing, and the people that visit these. Also, what could reiterate everything everybody said about bringing income, a higher level of quality of life for people, as well as retention of residents, as well as bringing in new residents. But I did want to also address some things that a council member water-filled question regarding tasting rooms. And again, with the hours, wineries definitely do have daytime hours, and I know we're all more familiar with those as well, but the showcase of a winery is the vineyards themselves, beautiful day, beautiful green vines. With a brewery like this, especially in an industrial area, the showcase is indoors, hence the tours. Being able to see these cool ships, the brewing process, the barrels and the puncheons definitely brings the experience around to the consumer. Much it is, you know, visiting a city really helps you experience the city itself. And again, the tasting hours are conducive to being inside and being after hours. Obviously, the libertine brewing company has made a lot of concessions for this tasting room regarding limiting their hours, limiting their visitors, no longer having an outdoor tasting area or patio, no live music, no entertainment. But the entertainment that we do get out of these breweries and these tasting rooms is the social aspect. A lot of things that we're missing in our society right now is being able to sit around a table and talk to friends, make new friends, and generally talk about something as exciting as wild, local ales made with wild yeast strains in the air. This is not just filtered water in stainless steel containers. This is living, breathing beer. And being able to experience this and taste it for yourself is pretty exciting. Be able to share it with others is even more exciting. Very small tastes, very small visits. Come, taste, enjoy, and leave with something. I'm sure we're all familiar with Costco. You don't sit down and eat a meal in the middle of the aisles. You go there, you have something on toothpick, you say you like it or not, and you go and you got to buy the final product and you take it home. This is very similar to that in that regard. So, again, it's a great place to go, experience, get a little taste of the Central Coast, and leave with something to share with your friends afterwards. I just wanted to make that, and I hope that you approve this. libertine brewing company could really use this area. They already have the building, and I think the Central Coast community in general would appreciate having the libertine in their area. Thank you.
Thank you, Brant. You did. That was the last one for in favor. You're in opposition, which I will be calling...
She's in favor.
Okay, it was put in the wrong pile. I'm sorry, Nancy. Please come to the podium.
Sorry, I was supposed to... You did get it.
No, I did get it.
My name is Nancy Stewart, 901 West Main Street. All of these people, all the applicants, candidates, have all said wonderful things, and you know what? I agree with them all 100%. We have, I have lived in Santa Maria for close to 55 years. We have tried over many, many, many years to bring some livelihood to this community, get us out of the rut, try something a little different, a little unique. And I think this is presented for us right now. This is the time. I was at the planning commission hearings, and I was very disturbed because I didn't understand why they voted against it. The only issue they seemed to have was the parking. And if you're going to only have 14 or even 25 people allowed, you're not going to have a parking issue. You're going to have three or four people to a car at the most. They are not going to stay there from 6:00 until 10:00, or 4:00 to 10:00, whatever it is. They're going to come in and be there for a couple hours at the most and move on to something else. We should take this opportunity to bring a unique business to our community. This is not a business where they're going to go into stinkies and watch football all day long and drink beer all afternoon. This is a tasting. And I'm not a beer drinker. I have no relation to any of these people. I don't even know them. But a tasting is different from going to a bar and drinking all afternoon. I would urge you to think about the concessions they've already made, and in fact, I'd love to have them open at 3:00. So, when I have people come from out of town and I want to take them out to taste it, I could go a little bit earlier. I don't like to go out at night, so I'd like to give them a little bit earlier hours so that I could enjoy it too. And I'm not a beer drinker. But please consider, this is such a unique opportunity, such a good growth idea for our community, something that will bring notoriety, good notoriety, to our community, and maybe people will stop by once in a while and start patronizing our other businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. I have four speakers in opposition, and I will start with Mr. Hans Deuce. I hope I pronounced that correctly this time.
It was perfect, Etta.
Oh, thank you.
Still Hans Deuce, 1501 Laurel in Solvang. You know, some really good things said. And I have to agree with a lot of them. This is, you know, this is a wonderful opportunity. And these are some of the things I really want to talk about. I'm wondering why we limit it, though? Because of location. This is something that more people should be able to enjoy, not with limited hours, not with limited parking, things like that. You folks know your zoning. I'm not going to talk to you. I'm not going to talk to you about CM zoning, manufacturing zoning, and all that is, all that entails. You know it. But let's look at the opportunities, the vibrant environments that are being talked about tonight. This needs to be, along with others, like this business. Wine tasting, breweries, restaurants. There needs to be in an overlay zone, probably in downtown, where this can become a magnet, as they're speaking about, coming up and down 101. Without limited parking, without limited hours, without limited seating, this is a win-win for the industry, not just libertine, but others who will come, who will follow, and for the city. Something for locals to do, something for visitors to get excited about. You have business people come in, fly in, out of Zodiac or wherever. They spend the night, what do they do? I don't know. You have something like this, some nightlife, entertainment, where people can walk around, outside, have a little fun, see that Santa Maria is a great place to come on a vacation someday with their family. There's a tremendous opportunity here. Don't short sight it by just looking at one spot. Put them in a visible spot. Have your, have your community development look seriously at some type of an overlay and create a zone for businesses like this.
Thank you, Mr. Deuce.
Wow. Good timing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paula Gion.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Madam Mayor Protemp and Council Members. My name is Paula Gion. I live at 403 East Mariposa in Santa Maria. I am an employee at Sims Machinery, and I've been a resident of Santa Maria for over 22 years. I'm a mechanical engineer, graduated from Cal Poly, and have been very fortunate to stay in the area and get a job in engineering. And the reason why I'm here is because, as the past person just said, we're not against libertine, we're not against what they do, we're against the fact that they're bringing a tasting room right in front of where we work. We are an international company. We have a service technician right now in Japan. He's working right now. And if he needs help, we have to go in and do our, you know, help him out, give him whatever information he needs. So we do not have off-hours. We have to do testing on Saturdays to get machines or units out. So we, our hours are whenever we need to work, basically. And we, the company, when I started, moved from Presser Lane, the Gateway Center, because of the multi-use. We moved to where we are now because it was an industrial complex and hoping to, that it would stay like this. And I do see a potential for relocation. I consider Santa Maria my home, and I would not like Sims Machinery to move because we cannot keep the zoning, and that's basically the reason we're here. Again, I am not against libertine or what they do. I am against the fact that, you know, we're going off of Santa Maria Brewery. They have plenty of parking. If you've been there, the street, you can park in the street. There's parking right in front, there's, you know, there's parking all over where Santa Maria Brewery is. Where we are, you can't park on the street. The day that they had their outreach, there was already somebody parked there. We took a picture. And, you know, that's already, that's maybe a city code violation, I'm not sure. It says right there, right in front of, no parking. So we definitely see issues like this arising that, you know, was right in front of where we work, and so, and we do see parking issues if we have to come in and disruption to our work. So I hope you consider this, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula. Our next speaker is Rebecca Robinson.
I'll make sure I'm clear. Hi, my name is Rebecca. I live here in Santa Maria at 4293 Harmony Lane. I work in the area too. I'm a letter carrier for 23 years now. So I think I kind of have a good understanding of the businesses and the people here. I'm going to sound like a broken record too. No opposition to the business, production, none. It is the zoning, as I've been out there too. I've read the zoning that City of Santa Maria put into place that doesn't match. All the surrounding industrial buildings have complied, which I find kind of disgusting that, you know, we're pushing out a tech company that purchased this building for the reason of the zoning, followed the rules. Now, the rules are going to be changed, and he's going to leave. And I hate to see that, because Santa Maria has really no tech jobs. I just learned of someone else, but I'm not out in that area delivering the mail. But very little tech jobs. We have tons of welfare here, very little jobs. I have people come in all day looking for work. It's sad, because for the first time this year, I could really see a lot of people want work, more than I've seen in the past. And I don't want to see another business get pushed out because of the way they bought the building with the zoning, and now it's changed midway. And thank you for your time. I don't want to see a good tech company leaving. And as, as the hours, I can vouch, because I run express late at night, that they are working all times of the night. It is not a 9:00 to 5:00 operation at all. And I did know that they worked with overseas, I wasn't sure who, but it's not 9:00 to 5: So yeah, parking absolutely would be an issue. It just doesn't make any sense to me with the zoning, and I appreciate your time. Again, nobody's opposing this business and libertine and that. It's just like, hand said, I sound like a broken record. It would be fabulous. I know a ton of spots that are for rent right now as I pass them all day that are empty, which would be fabulous in the middle of town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rebecca. And our final speaker is James Sims.
My name is James Sims, and I own Sims Machinery International. Sorry, my address is 1424 Solomon Road in Santa Maria. I'm the owner of Sims Machinery International. We've been in business in Santa Maria for 28 years. We moved from, as Paula mentioned, we moved from Presser Lane to A Street eight years ago, specifically looking for a building that we could buy in Santa Maria, because they're very limited in the size we could afford, and also to admit a zoning that we're looking for, because we were looking for industrial businesses, commercial manufacturing that would match what we're doing. We moved out of a place that we had problems because it was a mixed business group. We have nine employees, they're high-paid people, young people, proud to say, we've done very well, thank goodness. They're long-lasting jobs. We have very few folks, they wear many hats, and we're proud that they were able to keep them through all the recessions and such. These people are high salary paid, anywhere from $60,000 to $80,000 and higher if we can, can get it. Really, we want to hire as many young people as we can. We're getting people out of Cal Poly. We start them out typically $40,000 to $50,000 and try to advance them as quickly as possible and try to be competitive with the big companies. We're an international company, as Paula said, so elegantly, we have no off-hours. I got one man in Singapore, or getting ready to leave for Singapore, one man in Japan, as Paula mentioned. And we're working on a project now for a steam turbine for a company in Spain, and it's to redesign a steam turbine for a company that, or for the, the owner is a Middle Eastern shipping company. So all of our work's international, and therefore, we don't have the normal 8:00 to 5:00 business hours that, that normal folks do. We're not, believe me, I am a beer drinker. I am for these folks totally. I feel bad even bringing up the opposition, but I think it's the wrong place. It should be in a place that offers, you know, those similar kinds of businesses. And in our area, we're industrial, we're trying to promote the high-tech companies, and that's what we do, and we're hoping that this would not have impact on us, but if it does, we'll have to move. And that's something I really don't want to do, because I may lose people, but if we have to, we have to. So just ask that to consider, I bought the building because of the zoning, and I hope that you will honor the business owners' decisions by keeping the zoning as it was, what we expect when we bought the building. We have a lot of money, we spent on the building, as did those folks as well, I understand that. But there was a reason we moved in over eight years ago, was specifically for this zoning, and to try to follow the rules, and we hope it can be the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to council for a discussion or a motion. Ms. Unico, would you, okay. Councilmember Boyson, yes, please.
Well, you know, a couple of things. One, I think Mr. Newton mentioned that there was only one business in opposition. I've been contacted by no less than four businesses in the immediate area that, that are in firm opposition to the idea of a tasting room. I, I think Mr. Sims and a couple of the other speakers that were quote-unquote, or are supporting the, the planning commission decision have mentioned that, you know, this is, this is not an environment like Morro Bay or a downtown environment, this sort of thing. I'm, I'm kind of concerned, I wish our, our community development or our planning department would have maybe directed these folks to a separate tasting room. This would be perfect for the downtown-specific plan. I just, I would love to see something like this. I'd love to see this whole operation at 901 West Main, Nancy. I, you know, I really would like to see some sort of catalyst to stimulate that downtown. We do have a climbing wall and a martial arts in the area, but neither of these were objected by the surrounding business owners. And for me, this is about property rights. The fact that it requires a CUP is indicative that it is not a permitted use. And the adjacent property owners are concerned about the impacts, and rightly so, that this, this could have on their business. These impacts were nonexistent, when, as Mr. Sims said, when he purchased the business eight years ago, these impacts were nonexistent. And he set up his business based on the fact that, you know, that they, there were going to be compatible commercial manufacturing operations, and anything else would require additional permitting and, and the public output like we're doing right now. I think the fact that, that staff is suggesting so many conditions on this process, on this project, is also indicative of the inherent potential conflicts. We may have conflicts that we haven't even, even thought of at this point in time. I, you know, we've pointed to the Santa Maria Brewing Company over there as example of a business that serves alcohol and coexists in this industrial and commercial setting. But, you know, the one thing about Santa Maria Brewing is that it is more of a, more of a standalone type of operation with separate parking, and it was one of the first businesses over there in that particular complex. So if Mr. Sims were looking for a, a new location to purchase, he would know that Santa Maria Brewing Company is already there. And so they would have the choice of that location with that full disclosure. So I, you know, this is just not the case with libertine. It's going into an already established business environment, and I, those businesses have a right to exist and permitted to operate under our city commercial municipal code within those, those guidelines of the, of the permitted uses. So I just personally think we need to respect the rights of those surrounding businesses and deny the use of this property for a tasting room. But again, fully supportive of tasting room in a different location within the city were, it just, it's just not the right place. So those would be my comments.
Really? What's that?
Well, you know, I waffled back and forth during tonight's discussions because I, like Councilman Boyson, or whatever your name is. I personally think that opportunities might be able to be considered and made. But many years ago, in a situation where we had some alteration of the rules of the game, led to some consequences. And I think probably Jack's indicating that, you know, the consequences of moving forward, and we have the ability to take away and all the other things, but I'll tell you what, it will be about like mating elephants to try and reverse a decision once we've made it. And, you know, from that aspect, we do have the ability, if we did overturn this and, and move forward. And I just, in my own personal experiences, fighting parking issues is just a killer. And we probably heard about that at Pioneer Valley High School, and I happen to live over in the area, so I know exactly what some of the opposition for the fireworks and those kinds of things, because I, as a council member, I've got people coming to my door saying, "How stupid are you?" And I say, "Very, actually." So I'd have to, I think, go along with Councilman Jack's statement that this, it's a great idea, and I know it would be wonderful, but just the, the location is not appropriate. Street parking is not available, we, you know, that's kind of a major corridor there, A Street. And I've been multiple times in the area to businesses and so forth, and playing the game of trying to restrict people or whatever with the parking is just not an easy thing to handle, even in the, in the best scenario. So I would have to agree with Councilman Boyson that this is probably not the thing to happen.
Councilmember Unico?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protemp. So, gosh, where to start? I don't even know where to start. I've got a whole page full of notes here. So first of all, I want to say that I appreciated the time that I spent with Mr. Sims, and he's very passionate about his business, and I learned a lot about it. It was very exciting and made me realize that I don't think that we're doing a great job of promoting those small businesses that are really doing great innovative things, and just really enjoyed spending the limited amount of time, and would like to come back and, you know, learn some more about what you're doing, because it's very exciting, and I appreciated that so much. I also appreciate the education I learned about brewing and beer, and it sounds real exciting, and I'm excited about that, bringing yeast from the air and using, you know, local wines and all of that. So a great opportunity to get education. It's, it's a little weird for me to be on this side of it, because usually when we're having these discussions, I'm on the other side, right? Because we're pro-business, and I'm usually the one saying, "No, we shouldn't do this, and this is the reason why we shouldn't do this," so that we're in this position is a little, I mean, this position is a little surprising to me. But I have to say, you know, I went to the, to the site this afternoon about 2:50 and walked the, the parking lot. There were eight of the businesses that I tried to go talk to were closed, there was nobody there, even though they had signs saying that they were open till 5:00. Four of them had signs saying they were open till 5:00 and were closed, and they could be out doing business, I don't know, but there weren't people there, and the parking lot was half-empty. So I know that's unusual, probably, it's not, you know, I'm not saying parking isn't going to be a concern, I'm just saying what my experience was when I was there this afternoon. You know, I just think with everything that we're trying to do, I don't understand, Mr. Apalhawa Karate, Jim got in there, I mean, how does that fit in with industrial, so when we're talking about, like you said... when we're talking about like uses and unlike uses, I don't really understand how having people come and work out at a karate gym, adults and children, fit into whatever it is. And we, as a council, all the time change zoning, and we do do CUPs all the time, so it's not unusual, so that we would do that isn't something that's unique or something that's unusual, because we do it all the time. And I would just really encourage us to be progressive and innovative thinkers, and, you know, as we're trying to move into building the downtown plan and creating an environment and a community that draws people, that isn't just kind of who we are, but who we want to be. And as one of the speakers said, you know, they, they're in Buellton and solving, and they're tasting beer, and then they pass us up, and they're going on now to, you know, to the South County. It would be really great for us to be, you know, a spot. And I think, well, I think that, you know, Mr. Sims certainly has conveyed his concerns well, I think that this location and these types of locations is exactly where you find a lot of brewery tasting rooms. Like if you look, you know, in other cities like Sacramento and other cities, they're in industrial areas. People don't necessarily want to go to, and quite frankly, no disrespect to Nancy, of course, but nobody, I don't care what we put at 901 West Main Street right now, nobody's going to 901 West Main Street right now. Hopefully in the future, we can change that, but I don't care what we put there, nobody's going. So I just, you know, again, I would just encourage, as I think that, you know, libertine has presented themselves and demonstrated, you know, that they're responsible business owners, that I believe that they're not, you know, they're not in the business of, you know, opening a bar and having people come and, you know, drink till they're drunk and get in their cars and take off. I think that Mr. Sims, you know, assertion that he has, he does international business, and he has people and business people having to come in, you know, days and nights and weekends, I understand that, but I don't think that the operation, the brewery and the limited number of parking spaces they're going to have is going to impact his ability to have parking for those customers of his who are coming in, because it's so limited, the number of patrons that libertine is going to be able to serve and the number of parking spaces they're going to need. I think with the count that we got, they're already over, so you got more parking spaces, you know, if you have people coming to cars. So, you know, I think it's something that I would support. I think it's going to be self-determination. If it's not the place for it and it's not going to work, people aren't going to come, and they're not, they're going to quit doing it because it's, and they're maybe relocate, because it's, you know, it's self-determination in terms of business. I think that if we make this decision tonight and, you know, close the doors on their ability to expand their operations and at least explore if this is something that can be successful in that location, mitigating the concerns of the neighbors, that it sends a clear message to other small business owners and other people who want to come to our community and do innovative things. And, you know, we had this discussion not too long ago when we had the mixed-use project come before us next to Zula. You know, we had, you know, the next-door neighbor came and said, you know, "I don't think it's going to work," and we said, "Look, this is our vision for the future, this is what we want, this is part of our downtown-specific plan," and we stuck to it. And I would just encourage us, because we do have the ability, although I appreciate Ms. Councilmember O'Rourke's concern about having to unring the bell once we've rung it, I think it does give us the opportunity, we do have the opportunity if it doesn't work, and all of the concerns of the people who are opposed come to light that, you know, we can close the door on it. So I would, I would definitely support, you know, on this limited basis, with the parking agreements in place, support overturning the Planning Commission's denial of the CUP.
Thank you, Ms. Zuniga. Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Protem. This, I'm sure we've all been wrestling on how we were going to vote on this, and we've been doing a lot of reading. I did visit the location, and I did speak to Mr. Sims on the phone, and I did speak to Mr. Newton on the phone, however, I never went into their respective businesses. I look at libertine as the kind of business that we want in Santa Maria, and I realize business is done differently today than it was 20 years ago, 30 years ago, probably mixed in different zoning areas. And I think this could be a great business to have downtown, and I think that we, you know, I felt for a long time, we have to, we have to really focus there on the downtown, if we allow other businesses around the, around the area and not focus on the downtown or don't lose the downtown. But, and I think that libertine is very legitimate, I hear nothing but positive things about it. But I, I think that Mr. Sims said that he was at Prescott Lane, and for a reason, he moved to someplace he thought was more appropriate for his business over on A Street. And I think we have to respect the investment that he made, not just a personal investment, but investment in our community and because of the zoning, and so that his business was blurry. So I think we, they knew when they went in that there were so many permitted uses in that zoning, and serving was not one of them. And so I am prepared to uphold the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, this is just a tough situation, and I know both parties have put blood, sweat, and tears into everything they have done. I look at both men, Mr. Sims, Luke, you guys are entrepreneurs, you're inventors, and you do well in your business, and this is what Santa Maria requires and needs to make Santa Maria a very successful city. It is tough, it is a very tough, tough decision, and I wish we, I wish we could take the component of your tasting room and move it someplace else while you do your brewing and the great things that you do, because I do see great things coming out of libertine. And I, just by what you said, you guys are going places and you're going to be doing great things, not in this country, but all over the world. You guys are going to be world, just as Mr. Sims is doing. And his investment in this community has been great. I have to reiterate what the other two council members and our mayor had indicated, that we do have to give respect to the investment, not saying that your investment's going to be less, because it's not going to be less. I wish we could figure out a way to make libertine a place where we could do both. And it's, it's a tough decision, and at the end of the day, it is going to be, I will have to vote to uphold the Planning Commission's decision as well on this project. And I thank you for everything that you have done to do what you guys do, and it's, it's just tough, and I wish we could, we could make it, we could make it work.
Madam Mayor Protem, I think, I think you've summed up all of our concerns and hopes and desires for, for bringing the companies like libertine into Santa Maria and a separate tasting room. Let's, let's get to work on finding something. But with that, if, I'm prepared to make a motion-
Please.
-for Resolution Number 2016-71, upholding the Planning Commission's denial of the libertine Brewing Company's conditional use permit.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Relentless.
Roque?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Thank you, and I am, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The City Council will consider amending Chapter 5-3 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code concerning animals and to enact a responsible pet owner ordinance.
Thank you, and staff report will be made by Deputy City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council, and Mayor Patino on the phone. We have a detailed staff report and highlighted changes of the current animal municipal code, thanks Steve, in the, in your agenda packet, so just, we have a brief summary PowerPoint summarizing that information you have in your packet. So the, Chapter 5.3 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code pertains to animals, and we have proposed changes for the council's consideration tonight that have been adopted by Santa Barbara County, which is the city's contracted program administrator for animal services. Those proposed changes include adding new definitions, updating the code, the definitions and language, an addition of a new section relating to sanitation of quarters and housing of animals, and updating an article to delineate the procedures for rabies quarantine animal bites, revising the dangerous dog article, and animal licensing provisions related to a responsible pet ordinance. And more specifically on the responsible pet ordinance, a few points to make here is licensing is currently required by state law, and the revenue from that licensing reduces the cost the city pays for animal services, it offsets the cost the general taxpayer pays for animal services when the animal owner themselves could pay the license fee. The owners ensure their pets receive veterinarian care in consultation with the proposed ordinance amendments. They can purchase unaltered pet licenses, so this is not proposed as a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance. The goal of the proposed ordinance change is to reduce stray animals and the associated costs that those stray animals bring to the neighborhood's quality of life and also to the cost of managing the animals through animal services and, and the government, governmental expense. And finally, this proposed ordinance change is consistent with that of Santa Barbara County and the seven other cities in Santa Barbara County. Guadalupe was the most recent other city to adopt a similar ordinance. So just in summary, we recommend introduction, a first reading for these ordinance changes, you have the markup version in your packet, and continue to the next meeting for a second reading and adoption of an ordinance to update the various provisions of the city's animal regulations to include current practice elements and to address problems related to pet overpopulation. And again, Jen Glick is still here from the Executive Director of Santa Barbara County Animal Services, and is, we're both available to answer any questions or provide any other information. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stillwell. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We have seven requests to speak in favor and one undeclared.
Okay, and I should have asked, do we have any written comments?
And we have no written.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Lisa, oops, I have to turn my mic on. Lisa Kenyon?
My name is Lisa Kenyon. I live at 4820 Lugano Way in Santa Barbara. I'm a resident of the unincorporated area of Santa Barbara in between Galita and the city. While I live 70 miles away, up-
Speak into the mic, please.
While I live 70 miles away, I truly care about the welfare of the animals here in the city of Santa Maria, from those that live around Prescott Park all the way down to Waller Park and from College out to Blosser. I devoted much personal time and energy as a member of the county's spay-neuter task force for nine months back in 2008 and 2009. I sought to understand what needed to be incorporated into the county's ordinance to meet the needs of the individuals whose position was different from my own. What did I come away with? I repeatedly heard the following key messages from individuals who had a different opinion from my own. Don't make this a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance. Don't penalize responsible pet owners. Don't penalize responsible breeders. Don't require a special breeder's permit. Do acknowledge the agricultural community's needs, and do stay away from large licensing differentials other than those already required by state law. The other one that I heard loud and clear was, make it where there's a conscious decision and discussion to spay-neuter pets between the pet owner and their veterinarian. The language that is in the county's responsible pet ownership ordinance addresses each one of these concerns. Therefore, the ordinance has been considered a win-win for all parties involved. Please closely evaluate who continues to support the county ordinance and wants to see these proposed amendments made here to the Santa Maria Municipal Code. Here are their passion and their compassion, their ordinary citizens, many of whom are doing extraordinary things day in and day out, year after year, who save animals' lives and want to make spay-neuter a societal norm while at the same time supporting responsible pet owners. What's the bottom line? This is an uncomplicated, elegant, innovative, easy to understand, easy to comply with, and easy to administer ordinance, which aligns with pre-existing state, county, and local laws for dogs, with a little element new for licensing unaltered cats. The ordinance was designed here in Santa Barbara County for all of Santa Barbara County. I am thrilled to be here this evening. I have been at each one of the council meetings all the way through for each city that has taken this on, and I'm so glad today is a day that you are listening and considering this amendment. I ask each of you to do your part in making a difference in the lives of responsible pet owners, the lives of the animals in this community, and the city of Santa Maria's well-being for generations to come. Please vote in favor of putting these amendments forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenyon. Our next speaker is Randy Fairbrother.
As a feral cat organization, Catalysts for Cats has been trapping and neutering over 400 to 500 cats a year in the North County for many, many years. Their lives improve significantly once they are no longer ruled by the hormonal urges that make their lives so difficult. Fewer kittens are born to repeat the cycle over and over again, and, and fewer cats are surrendered to the shelter. The community benefits by the lack of the disturbing behaviors such as caterwalling. Unfortunately, we far too often meet resistance in our work. We preach spay and neuter, yet for some people, lots of people actually, the message just doesn't get through. We found the ordinance enacted throughout the rest of the county has proven helpful in reaching some of these people. I urge you to vote for this ordinance, not only for the welfare of the felines, but for the welfare of the community overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairbrother. Our next speaker is Jessica Weeby.
I'm used to it.
Weeby, I almost said that, darn.
Thank you, councilmembers and Madam Mayor, for allowing us to speak today. My name is Jessica Weeby, and I'm currently the Outreach Coordinator for Project Pet Safe, a responsible pet ownership program within Animal Services. Sorry, I reside here at 4603 Vianina.
Thank you.
I've worked in animal welfare for 12 years, both in California and Colorado. I have experienced both in veterinary private practice, animal sheltering, and until recently, the five generations of Santa Mariaan family here. I would like to thank you for this opportunity for allowing the community to come and speak about the, our responsible pet ownership ordinance and its importance. Our Project Pet Safe program works specifically with our community to promote responsible pet ownership by vaccinating, microchipping, licensing, and spay-neuter. By passing the ordinance, pet owners will be encouraged to spay-neuter their pets, but will not be mandatory. Pet owners who are unsure or do not want to spay-neuter will be required to see a full-service veterinarian to discuss the risk of not altering their pets in order to obtain a signed veterinarian certificate. We at Animal Services work firsthand with the community members of Santa Maria and their pets. When talking with pet owners, they mostly just don't understand the importance of spay-neuter. By spay-neutering your pets, you're helping to decrease the chances of developing mammary testicular cancers, decrease the chance of pyomitri, which is an infected uterus, which can be fatal to your pet, and to help decrease the urge to roam. By spay-neutering their pets, it will be, also help prevent the unwanted litters and help keep our shelter numbers lower, and to decrease the amount of strays on our community streets. Animal Services also holds a vaccine clinic once a week. Since January, we have seen 820 Santa Maria city resident animals come through our vaccine clinic. Seventy-three percent of those animals are unaltered or not spayed or neutered. By passing the responsible pet ownership ordinance, it will be a positive step in animal welfare in our- welfare in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next speaker is Dr. Darcy Barnes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Darcy Barnes, 232 Willow Drive, Solvang, California. I'm a veterinarian who's been practicing exclusively in animal shelters and humane societies in Santa Barbara County, including Santa Maria, since 1993. In the early 2000s, animal welfare groups in universities nationwide began to collect data to determine whether there actually was an animal overpopulation problem, and if there was, how big it was. As a result, we are starting to have a more accurate picture of how many animals exist in each community. Because I was interested in the number of cats in Santa Maria, I used a cat population dynamics calculator available from the University of California at Davis, human population figures from the 2013 U.S. Census Bureau, information from the American Association of Veterinary Medicine and 2012 demographic source book, and statistics from our local animal services to calculate the approximate number of cats that currently live in the city of Santa Maria. According to the calculation, the conservative estimate of the number of cats in Santa Maria is about thirty-five thousand. About ten thousand of those are exclusively indoor and mostly already spayed and neutered. About twenty-five thousand cats are outdoor cats, either owned or unowned. Although some of these outdoor cats are spayed and neutered, most are not. According to the American Humane Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, only ten percent of stray cats received by shelters have been spayed or neutered. It is primarily unspayed and unneutered stray cats who are annoying their neighbors, filling the shelters, and needing rehoming. Unspayed and unneutered outdoor cats are also the primary source of the overwhelming numbers of kittens seen annually in Santa Maria and nationwide. Unspayed and unneutered cats cost municipalities a disproportionate amount of available resources compared to those that are spayed and neutered. There are far too many cats in this environment. Current research and attempts to decrease the outdoor cat populations are showing that the most effective, practical, and humane way to decrease the number of cats is through spading and neutering and educating the public about the correct way to interact with outdoor cats. Please help the people and cats in Santa Maria by increasing the number of spayed and neutered cats through a responsible pet ownership ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Vani Stewart.
I'm Vani Stewart, and I live at 4594 Monte Carlo Court, small Italy in Orchid. So, anyway, I'm here representing the Santa Maria Valley Humane Society. We have a resolution of the Board of Directors, whereas the number of dogs and cats from the city of Santa Maria continues to add an increase in the county animal shelters, an increase in the number of animals cared at the Santa Maria Valley Humane Society Shelter, and add an increase in animals at rescue groups throughout the Santa Maria Valley. And whereas despite the effort of committed staff and volunteers to find homes for these dogs and cats, the capacity of animal sheltering systems is constantly exceeded, and whereas many of these animals are lost, abandoned, and relinquished, and there are too few homes to adopt them. And whereas the results of euthanasia of healthy, adoptable animals, poor outcomes for city residents, and increased cost to local jurisdictions, and whereas believing that the city of Santa Maria is a community of caring individuals who care about the health and welfare of dogs and cats. Whereas the mission of the Santa Maria Valley Humane Society is to address overpopulation, engage the community through education and advocacy, and whereas this is the opportunity for the city of Santa Maria to move forward and join other humane cities of America. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Directors of the Santa Maria Valley Humane Society urges the city of Santa Maria to please pass a responsible pet ownership ordinance in response to the welfare and the local animals and community needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vani. Our next speaker is Jordana Ray.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and members of the council. My name is Jordana Ray. I am the CFO of the Santa Barbara County Animal Care Foundation. I have been asked to speak on behalf of our President, Linda Greco, who was not able to attend this evening and whose words I find very important in tonight's decision. We have citizens within our community who believe the government is too involved in our day-to-day lives. However, true to our democracy, sometimes the people must come forward to ask for the assistance of our local government to improve conditions within our community. Adoption of the Responsible Pet Owner Ordinance is an example of this need for assistance. The city of Santa Maria is saturated with unwanted animals, and as a result, there is an increase in the number of animals surrendered to our local county shelter, nuisance issues, threats to the public and their pets, animal bites and safety issues, stray animal injuries and death, abuse and neglect cases, and a significant number of unwanted animals as a result of unaltered animals running loose and indiscriminately mating. All of these above issues I have mentioned place an emotional and financial strain upon the community as a whole. To decrease the number of unwanted animals to overcome this problem, the community can either prolong the need to euthanize unwanted animals to decrease those numbers, or the community can choose to provide an intelligent and compassionate approach by encouraging the spay and neuter of more animals to establish a solution. This would act to redirect this problem now and into the future and into something we can all be proud of. This ordinance is a positive choice for an investment in our future, and I ask that you vote in favor of adopting this ordinance. And I, Jordana Ray, ask for your vote in favor of this ordinance as well. I do want to let you know that one of the other things that you need to be aware of is that people outside of our community, like in Oxnard, do come to our city because they believe it is okay to sell their animals here because they can't sell them in their community. And they believe it so because they say there's no ordinance here. They can't do it in Guadalupe, they can't do it in Santa Barbara, and certainly not in Long Oak. But in Santa Maria, they can, and they advertise it on Facebook all over the place. Having this ordinance will help solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Our next speaker is Barbara Edwards.
I'm Barbara Edwards, I live at 4106 Glenview, and I'm just a concerned citizen. I think we need to take care and make people responsible for their pets. Okay. I think we need to make people responsible for their pets, is what I wanted to let you know, if you don't know this already. One female dog can produce six litters of six to ten puppies per year. That means one unspayed female and her offspring can produce seventy-six thousand dogs in six years. An estimated eighty percent of these dogs will be euthanized in a shelter. And I ask you one question. Do you know seventy-six thousand people who would like to adopt a new dog? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Edwards. And our next speaker is Robert Walling.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Robert Walling, and I'm representing voices for the voiceless tonight. I just wanted to start off by thanking you all for taking this into consideration and really giving some thought behind this. I know that during the discussions, we've had some meetings with some of the members here on staff, and they've been very thoughtful and very concerned about this situation. I just really wanted to point out, without going over all these details that everybody's brought up of how wonderful this is, I really just wanted to point out the fact that we've got concerned citizens, we have got the Humane Society, we have got veterinarians, we've got county workers, I'm sure there are some city workers as well in here. Bringing everybody together for this particular issue, and I think that points out to the fact that this is something that we really need to do and bring to our county and just bring it, our city, and bring it into compliance with the county, which will bring other opportunities to educate and to reduce euthanizing pets and the other abuses that go along with that. On another note, though, I would like to thank the council and the city for the fireworks issue. You guys have gone way beyond what we anticipated, and I just wanted to give kudos for the effort that is put out by you all. We've already noticed reduced fireworks in certain areas, and I think we're going to have a good Fourth of July. It'll be reduced, and I think as we go along, your educational processes where your, the PSAs in the movie theaters, on TV, in the utility bills going forward, and the years going forward is going to reduce year by year by year, and I think you're going to see a wonderful benefit of that. So, again, I want to kudos for you for passing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Okay, I'd like to bring this item back to the council for discussion or motion.
So, I just have a question, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Has this been brought to the council before? This never, why are we last? I guess. I mean, it seems like such a no-brainer that I just-
This was an item that has not been brought to the council before. It has been some discussions with preliminary, with city staff a couple of years back, but it didn't get any traction. It wasn't until the community spoke out and they came forward, and in conjunction with the Animal Control Department of the county is why it's come forward before the council in the consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. But with that, I would be happy to move forward with the motion to approve ordinance number 2016-14.
Do we have a second? A second. Please call row.
Councilmember Boyson.
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke.
Aye.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem Waterfield.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Great. It passes. Congratulations. Good, good, good. Would you like me to wait?
Madam Pro Tem, I am going to sign off at this time.
You can't go home early. You have to wait. Okay.
You're probably having a craft beer right now.
Good night, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Good night. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Our next item will be a report from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Waterfield. City council members, the next agenda will be two weeks from this evening, the 21st of June. We have a number of consent agenda items. We try to keep that meeting relatively light because that's when we're presenting the 2016-18 budget to the city council for your consideration. However, we do have a number of consent agenda items. The second reading of the Responsible Pet Owner's Ordinance will be coming forward for your consideration. Also, the calling of the November 8th municipal election will be coming forward. We're also going to be bringing forward some amendments to the 2016 investment policy. We'll be also adopting a pedestrian improvement over at Marion Medical Center, Regional Medical Center. The lease with Greyhound is coming up, so we'll be addressing that as far as an amendment for that one is concerned. We're also looking at counseling the July 5th and also July 19th city council meetings and rescheduling for a special council meeting on July the 12th, which is in between both of those dates. So, we'll only have one city council meeting in the month of July. Not done with the consent agenda. We still have a couple of agreements, one for the cost and services rate study in our utilities department, another one for the mattress recycling program in utilities, and then finally, a bird abatement program over our landfill.
Did you say bird abatement?
Bird abatement, yes. That's the falcon ear that we have out there, contractors coming up for renewal. Also, we'll be gifting the Enos Rancho's house to the city. That item will be coming forward for council's consideration. And then we'll have three public hearings. First public hearing will be the first reading of the zoning ordinance text amendment for permits and height requirements, the annual landscape assessments, and finally, the proposed budget adoption for 2016-18 will be coming forward for council's consideration. We will be posting the 2016-18 budget on our website tomorrow, so if the viewing public would like to get access to that budget document, they can click on the city's website, and we'll have it there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Our next item is reports from council members. Who wants to go first?
I'd be happy to. Mine are usually the shortest anyways. I did have the privilege of visiting the design class at Allen Hancock College and reviewing their semester project this semester. They, again, did some iterations of what they would like to see happen at the JCPenney Shopping Center down there. I, you know, just took kind of a quick guess, and it seemed to me like that was about $150 million worth of improvements. So, I'm not sure, but some pretty creative stuff, and it was very good to see. The one thing that I did ask them, I made a suggestion, and I said, "Give us some ideas on what to do with Pearlman Park right there on Main and Broadway for next semester, even if it's just a mini project."
Brewery.
Brewery. And I kind of like that idea. So, in any event, they're going to maybe take that ball and run with it, and I again reiterated Mr. Opple's concerns that, you know, you never call in our planners for one of the first classes to let them know what actually can, you know, be done within our code and things like that. But I think they're getting the idea. Anyways, it was a fun experience. On May 26th, as required reporting, I did attend and represented city of Santa Maria at the Central Coast Water Authority Board of Directors meeting. Just a couple of interesting facts. First of all, as Mr. Springer has reported, our allocation this year is sixty percent of our normal. This is up from, was it five percent last year? Yeah, up from five percent last year, so we are going to get an abundance of state water to do all the things that we need to do.
Jack, does that have to do with the state water that the Santa Barbara County was trying to sell or do something with?
Oh, yeah, no, this is completely separate. We're still attempting to purchase that supplemental water table aid that is still available, and we feel we have a right to, and actually, those are continuing to progress. It's one of those that, at this point in time, no news is good news, so we're not hearing no, so we're kind of thinking that means they're trying to find a way to say yes. But a couple of interesting points, the 1415 snowfall in the Sierras, they believe that it is the lowest snowfall in the last 500 years.
Wow.
But this year, it's been very adequate. Lake Orville, which is the primary reservoir that we get our state water from, is at 94% of capacity, so it's changed quite a bit. Interesting, Montecito, which has been refusing to be part of any of these discussions of increased state water, that sort of thing, they need to go out and purchase 5,000 acre feet this year. So, it's going to be pretty expensive for them. The only other thing that, Ms. Waterfield, I do have to compliment you on the great golf tournament that you put on yesterday. I happen to have the pleasure to play with our fire chief, Mr. Kenley, and I had a quest- And I had a question of whether there was any police team that might have beat us. Well, wait a minute. We had the lowest score of the entire tournament, so I don't think any of the police would have beaten us. So, but Scott and I had a great time with a couple of other good golfers, and we really enjoyed ourselves. The carving stations for the tacos and the taco stand. And I'm not going to talk about the margarita station, but the sniper shooting and everything else.
It was unlike any other...
Unlike any other golf tournament. And I guarantee you that at least three of us will be back next year. And if we can get Chief Kenley to come on back for next year's golf tournament, we'll try and defend our title. Thank you very much.
Yes, Madam Mayor. A point of interest, LaFco had our meeting here in Santa Maria on Thursday. And the Local Agency Formation Commission Annual Conference will be held in Santa Barbara this year. And we hosted that about eight years ago, and it went off very well. Interesting, a couple of the points for the work sessions for the attendees is going up to Bradbury Dam to show the Northern California folks exactly that drought is not over. And as Jack indicated, a lot of them are saying, "Hey, there's a lot of snow, everything's full. What are you guys crying about?" So that's going to be a startling revelation for them. And then we're going down to Goleida's new reclamation plant. I forget how much, it was millions of dollars. It's innovative and going to look at that. And then we requested the city of Santa Barbara to come and look at their desal plant. But it's not up and running, but we got a rather strong no. So we don't know what that's all about. Anyway, then went to Oakley Park dedication today. Phenomenal. Those of you who haven't gone by, the place looks like it's tripled in size from what that park looked like just not too many years ago. It's just spectacular job from our community development block grant funds and the recreation parks and all the staff that have put into that. Then I was going to say the police council. Frankly, Jack and Scott and the sandbaggers that were 17 under par had to have cheated some way, shape, or form. And I'll get you 135 or six other golfers that will swear to that on a Bible. It was a great time.
Good. I'm glad you enjoyed yourself.
And we didn't even use all of our mulligans. We had three mulligans left at the end.
Ms. Zuniga?
Thank you. Councilmember Boyson and I met with the airport mobile home owners to hear some of the concerns that they're having and experiencing out there. I attended with you and the mayor Strawberry Grower Scholarship Awards Dinner, which was just really awesome, yes. And then, of course, the Community Action Commission's Champions Dinner that honored Fidenzo and Jackie Brunello, which was a great event. It was sold out. They had a packed crowd there. And then on Sunday, I attended the Drama and Music Club of the Special Needs Network presentation of Friendship. So these special needs adults did this great play, a musical, Friendship over at the Abel Maldonado Center on Sunday. And it was just, it took a couple of my granddaughters, and we really enjoyed it. It was a great time. And then, of course, went to the ribbon cutting of Oakley Park and so happily see that park finally, like, developed. And it was like a trip down memory lane for me because I grew up in that park. And then, just as a note, I don't know if people know, but we have a city flag. I didn't know that. I was sitting in the, at the Mission Plaza at San Luis Obispo for a concert last weekend. I'm like, "Oh, they have a city flag. We need a city flag." So we have a city flag. Did you know we had a city flag?
I did not know that.
I did not know that. So I would just, like, encourage us to figure out a way where we can promote our city flag. I don't know how we're going to do that. Fly it out there or something. I don't know. We should post it or something. And then I just, and then on a personal note, I just want to say that I have a grandson who is graduating from Alcamino Junior High tonight, and it's the first grandchild graduation that I've missed. I've attended every preschool, every kindergarten graduation. And so, Johnny boy, I just want to say congratulations. And Grandma's really proud of you. And I'm sorry I missed your graduation, but we'll make it up to you.
Good, thank you. And the mayor is not here, so I did not bring my phone where I keep my calendar on, so I'll just go back to what I remembered yesterday and today. And attended the torch run out here in front of city council with a lot of dignitaries. And our chief of police received this wonderful torch that they gave him. And it's absolutely beautiful. He's done a lot of great things for Special Olympics, and that was great. Went to Oakley dedication. And thank you, boys, so much for your comments on the golf tournament. I would love to take all the credit, but I can't. It was the entire team of the Santa Maria City Police Council. And topping it off with Jerry Schmidt and Stephanie Schmidt and Greg Beebe. And, I mean, I shouldn't even start naming names because there's just so many. Harold Goodman, who is our president, but a lot of hardworking people. But I would like to thank the citizens of the city of Santa Maria for coming out, not only playing in golf, but monetarily supporting the Santa Maria Police Council because what we get goes directly to the Santa Maria Police Department. And if my figures are correct, I am hoping that we will be able to donate about $100,000 to the Santa Maria PD. So it's up a little bit from last year of $92,000. So thank you to the city of Santa Maria, the entire community, for showing your support, putting your money where your mouth is, coming out and playing, enjoying. We try to give you a fun time to do everything by doing off-course activities that are very non, you know, that are not common with our taco margarita hole, our sniper hole, our beanbag hole, our barbecue martini holes. Everyone has a really good time out there, so...
Ms. Waterfield, trust me, having played in probably more golf tournaments than anybody in this room, that ranks right at the top.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boyson. And with that, we are done.